Yeah, all right. Good evening everyone and welcome to the regular meeting of the Hyde Park Central School District Board of Education. Tonight is Thursday, January twenty third, two zero two five. At this time, uh we will need to adjourn for executive session for the purpose of discussing mid-year review, discipline suspension dismissal removal of a particular person or persons and proposed litigation for pilot agreement. Do I have a motion to enter executive session?
So moved.
Second.
A discussion. All those in favor?
All right.
I just.
At this time, I would like to return to open session. And can we please rise with the president.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
We don't have any agenda modifications to take care of that. All right, we don't have any agenda modifications. So can I move on to four point three? Could I get a motion to adopt tonight's agenda?
So move to this.
Second. Carl.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
I.
Opposed? Motion carried. Upcoming events, uh, let's see, Tuesday, January twenty eighth, we have a community chat at Havilland Middle School Library. And that'll be from six thirty to seven thirty P M. Wednesday, January twenty ninth, um, there'll be a holiday for Lunar New Year. All buildings are closed. Friday, January thirty first, uh, note, there's a date changed for this event. It's STEM Night A Cappella Invitational Concert at the Family Resource Center Hyde Park Elementary. And F D R. Oh, there's two different things, sorry, two different things on the thirty first, sorry, I'll start over. Uh, there's one thing is a STEM night, and that's at the Family Resource Center at Hyde Park Elementary, and that's from six to seven P M. And then there's also an a cappella invitational concert at F D R at seven P M. Um, Saturday, uh, February first, Saturday Academy at the Family Resource Center in Hyde Park, Hyde Park Elementary. And that's nine A M. To noon.
That's at North Park.
Oh. That's at North Park. Okay. Um. Friday, September seventh, two hour delay for S P L. All schools see their schedule. Uh, Thursday, February thirteenth is our next board meeting, and that will be at Bible Lab. Uh, open session starts at seven P M. Any other upcoming events that aren't on here? Okay. Moving on to pride. Liz?
Um, so there's a lot to talk about. First, start with North Park. So their second grade classes are doing a collaboration with our teacher in which they are going to be learning. Um, about the celebration and understanding more of upcoming the the upcoming lunar year. Uh, they will work on banners that will celebrate the year of the snake, and they will enhance in phrases that are written in Chinese lettering. Um, they will discuss the meaning of the phrases and um, how they might illustrate them, and then they will soon later. Um, illustrate them, and they will be displayed in the cafeteria so that people are able to see it and, you know, get a little bit more experience of what it, what they created. Um, at Violet Avenue, they're, they wanna shout out, um, the staff of B A S. For their continued support at the Lions Club and the Hyde Park Community Cares. Um, they purchased wreaths within the district with a total of seventy, so they're really proud of that. Um. The staff provided holiday gifts for twenty five students with the help of, uh, the district office. Um, they also have a big thank you for the town of Poughkeepsie for providing holiday meals to some of their fam, some of the families. And, um, by that, we appreciate their ongoing support to the students. Uh, they also have the recycling program, and they have recycled almost five hundred bottles so far. Um, so all these funds will be going into donations for the P T A to purchase more books for their vending machines that they have at Violet Avenue. Also, the second and fifth grade classes attended a game about women's basketball game at Maris College. Um, on Thursday, the sixteenth. They were able to bring over two hundred fifty students and the staff to the McCann Center, um, which Mr., uh, Dr. Roman was also able to stop by. And watch with the students. Um, they had a great time in Maris One, so that's also a plus. Uh, the fifth grade classes went on a field trip yesterday to SUNY New Paltz, the Planetarium and the Art Museum. Uh, it was a bit chilly, but they still had a great day, and they were able to learn a lot. They also stopped at McDonald's for lunch, so students really enjoyed that. Um, the third graders are starting their, um, STEM pro, uh, project, which they are doing engineering, they're engineering marble runs. So kind of incorporating it into their science unit of forces in motion. Uh, this is where they're kind of working together to design and engineer a marble run using what they've learned about friction and unbalanced forces. Um, again, to highlight Lunar New Year, uh, Ms. Ellis's first, uh, E N L first and second graders. Are reading books about the lunar year, and they're going to be starting a project at the beginning of the week. Um, kind of on what they've been learning. Also, they're starting their, uh, running the Girls on the Run program again, uh, once again this year. Um, so Connor, Ms. Marison, and Ms. Um. Okudowski, um, they can't wait to continue with the same students and newcomers, so they're really excited about that. They feel that the program empowers and participates in all abilities, so, um. You know, the unique strengths with fostering their teamwork and connection. The volunteer coaches, um, combine physical activity and lessons in life skills. Uh, helping them build resilience and, um. You know, kind of building their confidence. At the end of the season, they all run a team five, uh, five K. In which they feel that that gives them a sense of boosting their confidence and a sense that they have achieved something really big. At Havilland today, we had a collaboration with the, um, the F D R Counseling Department and the eighth graders. There was a, some kind of similar to orientation from transitioning eighth grade to ninth grade. So the eighth graders were able to visit F D R, um, even the school counselors and tour the building. Um, they also learned about the new like courses we offer and the different things that they can do that are not talked about as much at Havilland. Um, kind of to add on to F D R's events as well. Um, F D R students also, uh, volunteered to take time out of their day and, uh, toured. Around and kind of give their own experience to the eighth graders of what to expect and what courses they are able to take and, you know. Some advice that they would, um, give the eighth graders. So I was actually there today. It was a great success. I actually really liked talking to everybody. And we were able to get through, um, most of the things on the lower level, so. It was really good. I definitely like think that we should continue doing that, because I think it was, you know. For me, I would have wished that that happened during my eighth grade year, because it was, it was pretty helpful. I actually learned that some, I actually learned something new that I didn't know, so I was like, oh, that's crazy. Um. But, uh, Mister. Mister Shaw would like to thank the counseling departments and Mister Ella for their support and the guidance in for this new practice. So, uh, at F D R, we're actually finishing Regents Week, so classes will begin again on Monday next week. Um. But yes, I, that was mostly all, and.
You mentioned McDonald's, Mister Elliot's heart skipped a beat.
Yes, they were, I bet they were really excited.
I didn't get that memo, and I went with it.
You look at the bill.
Yeah.
All right, any other pride you can.
Yes, so I'm really excited to share with you, uh, the following points of pride. Uh, first and foremost, I want to congratulate. Beth Fletcher, uh, she, she was selected, um. And nominated for the New York State Athletic Administrators Association Judith Anne Knight Positive Change Award for Section Nine. As many of you know, uh, this, this position has predominantly been filled by male individuals. Um, and it's just remarkable that she was selected. Uh, she's doing some outstanding things in terms of thinking outside the box. Working with our community, um, looking to innovate our programs and working with all of our, uh, clubs. Um, teams and and coaches, and so just want to give her, uh, kudos for being selected. Uh, amongst her peers, uh, for this award. Next, uh, want to congratulate the following students for being selected. For the Scholastic Art Award, uh, so the following students have been selected for the Golden Silver Key. Lee Costora, Abigail Gray, Sarah Stratten, and Evelyn Valderomas. Uh, so congratulations, um, to those students, honorable mention. We have Lilian Gearhart, and Helise Shurak, or Shurak. And Anna Val Zane. So congratulations to all of the students that participated. And kudos, uh, to the students that were selected, uh, as award winners. We also just want to say thank you to our amazing, uh, faculty and staff. Um, I'm not sure if anyone had an opportunity to hear, see some of the performances this winter, but. All the shows that I went to, it, I was just amazed with the amount of talent that we had. Uh, even Roman, who's our regular here, had a few, uh, solo, uh, performance, uh, pieces. And just, just amazed at them, the talent that we have in our district. So kudos to our, our, our faculty, our staff, our families that are involved. And supporting, uh, the arts programs, and of course, uh, special kudos to our, our, our leader in that division, uh, Melinda Demea.
So good evening. It's always a pleasure to share with the board, my fellow colleagues and community members, our artists and musician of the month. In January, we are celebrating our. Artist of the Month, Peyton Meyer, who is a fifth grade artist from Netherwood Elementary. As you can see from this image, Peyton is passionate about geometric shapes and splashes of color. Peyton shared that making art helps him feel still and calm. Outstanding work, Peyton. Next, we have our musician of the month, Jake Florin. Uh, we would like to come celebrate Jake, a senior musician from F D R. Jake is an established trumpet player. Who shares his brilliance with the Wind Ensemble, Jazz Ensemble, Pitt Orchestra, Pep Band, and Orchestra. Jake shared that learning to play an instrument taught him to thrive under pressure. Appreciate the value of hard work and through preparation. And helped him develop long lasting friendships. Congratulations, Jake.
Any other pride from? By would just say with Regents Week, uh, being, uh, kind of rounded out, thank you to all our students for all the hard work studying, our teachers, our proctors. Our data people, our tech people. There's a lot that goes into the week and so forth. I love the whole fact that our eleventh grader or, um, students in eleventh grade take the E L A Regents. I think it's a first swing to get ready for June, so thank you for everybody for the hard work, both the faculty and staff, our teachers. And our students for studying so hard. You have a pride? All right, moving on to superintendent's reports.
I'll keep it brief today. I just want to, um, let the board know that, um, we have continued with our student. Advisory group meetings, uh, right before the break, I meet with the students at each of the schools. We're going to continue with our second meeting. Uh, this year, um. And, uh, continuing our snack chats, uh, with our faculty, very informal conversation, just touching base with our, our staff. At each of the schools, unfortunately, we had to, uh, reschedule one this past week. Um, but certainly, uh, looking to do that and engage with our, our, our faculty and staff throughout the district. Um, and then lastly, uh, the state of the state, uh, the, the governor's, um, budget had an opportunity to review that. Um, again, those are proposals. Um, one of the biggest, uh, takeaways, um, was the foundation aid. Um, one of the things that, uh, the, the governor is proposing is a two percent increase, um, across the board for, uh, school districts. Um, so more to come in our budget presentation and, um, presentations that will follow after today. Will be, um, sure to include updates as we, as we move forward.
Okay. All right, moving on to seven point two, our food service update with Craig Elliott.
Oh, thank you. Good afternoon, everyone. My name is, um, Craig Elliott. I'm the school lunch director here. And I come here with over twenty plus years of, um, experience in dining services and, you know, um, the culinary hearts. Uh, my, my past, um, job was, um, in Poughkeepsie where I was the assistant, um, there. And I also worked at Swinging Pals. For over seventeen years in the dining service, uh, which. You know, we did humorous things there, um, create menus, ordering. Um, banquets, catering, a lot of different, um, things I've learned over the years. So that's, um, the experience I bring to, um. The Hyde Park, uh, Central School District. So, um, I want to start with this slide, um, School Lunch Finance one O one. Um, School Lunch Finance one O one. Is, um. Cafeteria funds. The cafeteria operates on itself, so the cafeteria operates its own, um, business. Um, we get funded by the federal. And the state, uh, for meal reimbursement and cash reimbursement, um. Based on sales that we have. We're governed by the U S D A. We were also regulated by the state, um, and department. Um. Just to make sure that we're following the guidelines that are given by the U S D A. If a program, um, like our program is declared or poorly run. We could require, um, funding from the general funds, meaning. The general funds from this, um, from the school, because we actually have a C fund which we. We get our funding from. When we get our reimbursement. So this is a chart that has a year to year meal served from the year twenty two. So this is a chart that has a year to year meal served from the year twenty two. Twenty three to twenty four, twenty five. On our breakdown of this chart, on September twenty twenty two. Right there in um green and blue, you can't see that. In blue, um. That this year is the year before we uh became C E P, so the twenty two, twenty three um school year. Our percentage um of participation was twenty twenty eighth uh percent for that school year. In the month of September for breakfast. For the here, um twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five. Our percentage went up to thirty eight uh percent in the following um year. Which is in green and that is the twenty twenty four, twenty five school year. Which that's about a ten percent uh increase for that for that month overall. Overall, um here for the breakfast, we have served over forty two thousand and fifty. Meals and that is an increase of about twenty nine point eight percent. Over that um the school year from twenty twenty two to twenty twenty four. For breakfast alone. In the same um column next to it where we have. The meals served for lunch in September, we have forty eight percent. Participation for the month of September in the year twenty twenty two, twenty twenty three. And for the year twenty twenty four, twenty five. Our meals uh participation went to sixty six uh percent. That's an eighteen percent um increase uh for that month. And overall, for the school year, from the twenty three to twenty four, we've increased our meal participation. Twenty two percent, which um that increase equates to sixty three thousand and forty nine meals. Total meals served by month. Here we have another uh chart that shows. Um, this is a breakdown of thousands, so this is the amount of um the amount of meals served. So I'm gonna look at the month of October for breakfast. The twenty two, twenty three school year. Again, uh these meals were paid. It was fourteen thousand and ninety four meals that were served in that um. School year in October. And the fo- following um school year, which is the twenty twenty four, twenty five. We've um increased the meals to twenty four thousand two hundred eighteen. Which that equates to about ten thousand more meals just for breakfast. And that's a seventy one point eight percent increase compared to the previous uh school years when we weren't um serving free meals. For lunch, the same exact month of October. Uh twenty twenty two, twenty three school year, it was twenty nine thousand eight hundred and nine meals served. And the twenty four, twenty five school year, we've increased those meals to forty four thousand six hundred and sixty five meals. Which with the increase of fourteen thousand eight hundred and fifty six, which that's about forty nine point eight. Percent um increase on meals served. Here with your um reimbursement is um or reimbursement that we get from the the state and the USDA department. And while we're um on October, October is our um biggest uh performance month, so. I want to kind of stick with that uh month. If you um, the twenty twenty two, twenty three um school year. We got a reimbursement of twenty two thousand two hundred and forty six dollars for paid meals. In that school year, just for breakfast. And that was increased to the following year, which is the twenty fourth school year. Fifty eight thousand eight hundred and nine, which that was a hundred and forty four forty. Hundred and sixty four percent increase for that year. Uh moving into the new um school year that we're in now, the twenty four, twenty five school year. Our reimbursement for that same exact month is seventy thousand seven hundred and twenty six. Dollars, which that's a twenty percent increase from the previous year. So as you can see, we kind of, you know, there there's a trend of about twenty percent or ten percent increase every year. Since we became um C E P. For for the first year we became C E P was a hundred and sixty four uh percent increase in funding. We went from that to for lunch. Um, it was about, it's a ninety two percent um increase from what we previous um got for lunch, which. We got paid um ninety one thousand nine hundred and thirteen. And the previous year, which is the twenty three, twenty four school year, we got a hundred and seventy seven thousand three hundred and eight. And the following year, we increased that to two hundred and four thousand dollars, five hundred and sixty two dollars. Which that is a fifteen point three seven percent increase. Uh, I just want to highlight um that we also have um outside programs that we do here. Um, we have a U P K program that we provide breakfast and lunch at the Hyde Park Elementary. And we provide um meals daily, so it's about sixty to ninety. For kids on any given day, they don't all take lunch all the time or breakfast, so. But the participation at the school is about ninety four um kids and. We're actually looking to, you know, we're exploring the idea of trying to feed the kids at um the Holy Trinity Annex as well. Uh for their U P K uh program, which they have over two hundred uh plus kids. Uh and ninety ninety plus kids are a part of the district as well. Um, this program is a program that's very um dear to me, I I would say. Um, I remember when I just came um here, I was doing the interview. This was one of the programs um I really, you know, I was very passionate about it, I I guess. I I really wanted to bring this program um to the school district. And this is a grant based program, which you have to apply for a grant. And we applied for the grant and we got it um this year. So this is actually a new program we added to the district. And it's called Fresh Fruits and Vegetables. The Fresh Fruits and Vegetable Program is a program. That provides fresh fruits and vegetables to the kids in the district, only in the elementary um school. This grant is just for elementary um level. The goal is to create a healthier school environment by providing. Healthier food choice and expand the variety of fruits and vegetable that. Expand the variety of foods and vegetable that kids um consume. Um, we plan to make a difference with this program um in terms of the type of fruits and the type of vegetable. That kids are um eating. Um, this week we had. Um, this week, not this week, next week, we're gonna have papayas. And papayas is, you know, is a fruit that is a tropical fruit that kids would not be able to eat when they're in. You know, especially up north here in America, it's not grown in in this country, first of all, so. I try to bring different varieties of fruits from different parts of the country. And also utilize the local fruits and vegetables as well, because the program. Wants you to utilize as much fruits and vegetable local. Um, so this is something that, you know, year in, year out, we're gonna get better at it. Um, we're gonna. Try to get more funding, more more um grants for this program to keep this program going, because I believe it's. It's a good program to have when we teach um young kids how to eat um fruits and vegetables. Um, this is another program that I added to the school as well. This not a program that we had here before. Um, it's called the After School Snack Program. And what this program does is it's helped to stop the hunger gap um throughout the day, because this is um for kids that are after school. And this program is extended across the school district, so K to twelve, all the kids can participate as long as you're. In a after school program or you just in a program where you're just hanging out, waiting on the bus. Or you're in the gym. Unfortunately, it's not a program that is open to. The athletic um kids, the kids that are are chosen for athletics, but they can be a part of those clubs as well. And, you know, partake into the snack program as well, so. And this is a funded program by the federal. And we have to apply for this program every year. But it's a part of the National School Lunch Program, so as long as there is a need here, which we have a a a need here. Uh, just for example, um Voile Avenue, they're about seventy seven percent needy. Um, Havilin is about seventy one percent needy. And across the district, we're above the fifty percent mark where we need to be, um you know, to qualify. Um, so I've seen this program uh continuing and getting stronger and stronger every year. Um, inventory um um equipments, um. This is another uh one, when I came here, I saw that we really needed an upgrade uh with the kitchens here. Just based on where I'm coming from, my experience seeing equipment, seeing how things are. Thing, seeing the flow of things and just seeing how hard you have to work if you don't have the proper equipment. You can't do the the um the menus that you want to do because of the, just the lack of um equipments or. The equipments are just not up to standard where they should be. So, um at Capital Region Bosse's, we work with a company called Commercial Kitchen Design, where they came in and did. A process where they looked at the equipments to make sure that the equipments are up to par. And they do that by just looking at um and not analyzing the equipments to see how they work. How efficient they are, the type of equipments that we have. They break them down based on just identifying all those equipments and putting them into a hoop. You do a physical counting, so they actually went around to all the kitchens on on uh campus here and looked at all the equipments. They came up with the needs of the equipment as well. And the ones that we have, we do have equipments that we can use, because we do have equipments that were here, um. You know, maybe five years old, maybe three years old, but. For the most part, uh most of our equipments and the line itself is just way, way behind what it should be. This is. Actually the um the high school line and, you know, we're very dependent to the amount of space that we we have, right? A line like um this on a high school, normally you have like a salad um option. You have, you know, uh sandwich option. We don't have the space. To utilize it as much as we want to utilize it. We have four wells that are hot. And the temperatures don't really have a the good regulator either, so it's hard to keep things um hot. As you can see, there's a a pan with uh bread there. Usually you have like bread in in a basket or a bowl. It has to be on the line because you can't put it on top of the line because of um health um reasons. You have to put it behind a sneeze guard. You put, you have to put metal um behind there, so now we put the bread inside a metal pan. It doesn't look aesthetically um appealing to me. And I know that when the customer comes there, it's not gonna look aesthetically pleasing to them as well. So the idea is to just upgrade what we have and um, you know. Just make things um a lot better than what it is now. I and I believe that we can do it. Um, it's just gonna take a little bit of time. And some work and I'm willing to to go all the way, um as long as I'm getting the support that I need. And yes, thank you. Any questions?
Thank you, this was good. I do have a couple. Um, so with the Finance one oh one, you said that we get the reimbursement from USDA for food. Do they have any programs to help school districts with equipment or?
There is a program out there, um that one is coming up and um I was talking to Jeff about it um today as well and. Um, he actually has um one of the team member working on a grant. That grant usually comes out in about April. It's like an equipment grant. You don't get a lot of uh funds, because what they do is they look at the most. Um needy school district in terms of their percentage as well. And they have, you know, maybe about two million dollars and they'll say, well, you get um a hundred thousand. You get a hundred thousand, which it helps. Um, but yes, we are looking into um getting uh some kind of equipment grant.
Next question I had was in the after school program. You said that athletes that are after school aren't eligible for that? Do are we, are we turning?
No, 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 we're not, we're not, um, the. Based on the um. How they regulate the program. They say the program is. You cannot stop a child from going into whichever environment the snack is gonna be. And because um basketball, football is a program where you actually choose someone to to be a part of the team. So not anyone can be a part of the team. And because of that reason, the state um and the USDA says we are not gonna provide meals to that, those kids. But there is the loophole of if they're a part of a club, music club. Um, you know, any any club you have or after school program, they're waiting on the bus. They can have, um, we can provide a snack for it.
Nobody's monitoring that to say, go, you know, go away, prove prove you're supposed to.
No, we're not gonna, we're not gonna turn kids away. We're we're never gonna turn kids away, but I'm just saying. How the program um is regulated, it's regulated in that way where we can't provide. Um, meals directly for um kids that are part of football. Uh, because it's a, it's 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 kind of, um, you are, you're choo- chosen to be part of that, um.
Okay, as long as we're not turning turning away anyone, that's that's good. And lastly, on the whole equipment inventory, I think that's a good time, you know, good look at to start. Thinking of future capital projects and stuff, but have we ever um engaged with um the culinary? We we have, you know, the, you know, probably the best culinary school, you know, in the uh world.
That's where I went.
Like, are there, I I know they have lots of endowments. Are there any programs?
I I um.
Hyde Park, where they are?
There is, the only program that I know of um that I try to explore was. To get them to come here to train the um the staff. And that, um, at the moment, there is no grant available for that. It's usually a grant uh based program as well where. We apply for the grant and they um um get the grant to come and train the staff for about a week. They provide like the. Knife, um a recipe book, things like that, um aprons, hats. And just, you know, um bring a different um type of meal to this environment instead of the. You know, heat and and, you know, cooling type um food. It's more of, you know, scratch, scratch um salads. Uh when I was in Poughkeepsie, um I actually brought in. Um, and a program that was funded um by the culinary um down there. Where we had two ladies um come in and they taught the staff for a full week. On how to um cook um scratch cooking, but no um, no equipments.
Okay, all right, thanks. Any other uh questions?
Is could modernizing some of the equipment save us on energy costs? Are they more efficient now?
Yes, uh that's a good question. They they are um way more efficient, so. Just for example, you have the ovens that we have now, they are called combi ovens, which. You you might have a combi oven in your um house, which it has a fan that blows and it has the the heat. So that's a combination of the heat being circulated and the um the heat coming out of the vents wherever. If it's gas or electric. Um, and then you have a a combination, um. Um and then you have a a combination um oven which actually a convection oven. Convection oven is has the fan and has the the heat circulating. A combi oven is the oven that it has the same setup, but it's more sealed. So when you close the door, the door um locks. It has um steam as well as a as a part of the system. So instead of having a steamer, you could have that uh combi oven that has the steam and the um the heat where you don't have to purchase a steamer. So you save money on that equipment there. It cooks about twenty-five percent faster, so I've had experience where I'm cooking like a brisket in an oven like that and it will take like about two hours. It comes to um to another oven, um a convection oven where it's like three and a half, four hours for the same um. So it all depends on on what you're doing, but it's it's way more fast, way more efficient. And it has timer on it, so you you you're not overcooking the product. So you set your time, you put it in. You have you have a thermometer that is on the oven as well where you can take the temperature. So, yes.
So what I would say is, Craig, we're very happy you're here. Thank you. Very, very thorough presentation and so forth to help us move forward. And continue to stay on the culinary. And of course, I think that'd be a great partnership as Mr. Zagorski said, I'm a former culinary employee like you and so forth. Our daughter graduated there. That'd be a great connection. Um what I'm thinking about is, you know, kind of as you mentioned, your customers are students. And we've come so far and so forth. How do we assess the students and so forth? It's very tricky. Because I would say even in our own household, my wife makes all these beautiful meals. Tradition, you know, great stuff. All the kids wanna eat is chicken wings. So so how do we assess, you know, not only does it's nutritious, that it's working for the kids? That's a very tricky point.
Yes, it it definitely is. We 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 try to have a balance, especially with our menus. Uh we don't, you know, we can't get a, get rid of the chicken nuggets, right? And the chicken nuggets that we have, it's not, it's totally different from the chicken nuggets that you'll buy at McDonald's too. It it's um the the, everything about that product is developed by the USDA. They have nutritionists that are in the labs and things like that, so. Most of the time, the kids don't like the taste of it because it has more grains in it and things like that. So we try to give them a balance of um different types of meals. On one of the slides here, we had um it's a meat um pasta, so that's a scratch um cooking um item. So we do, you know, scratch items, um turkey, things like that. So we give them a mixture of.
Kids are very finicky. So to your point, as we move towards our budget cycle, I'm sure you'll make recommendations for any kind of upgrades that you think might be needed so that we could review them.
Okay, sounds good. Thank you.
I have a, I just have a few questions as well.
Yes.
Now you talked about in your Finance One O One that your business within the school and and it's poorly run, you might have to take money from us. I assume we're in the black?
I would just say that we're, no, we're not. We're not uh in in the black, right?
The black is good.
Wait, we we are asking for money. We're not there yet, but we are asking for money. Um we
For upgrades?
Yes, because one of the things about the upgrades, it adds more um more meals, right? So for example, right now, we're about two twenty, um two hundred and twenty breakfasts being served at the the high school, right? We could bring that up to about four hundred, um at least three hundred. But again, the timing, uh the capacity, the line, everything, we're just not equipped to 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 do more. We we're having that same problem at Haviland where where we have lines going down to the to the wire. Because, you know, and and it just keeps getting more and we're doing three hundred plus uh breakfast over there. We do six hundred and fifty uh meals uh for lunch at the high school and the middle school. So the program is growing, but it's it's kinda outgrown, um you know, the capacity of of what we have here to 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 keep up with. So we can add fifty staff. If you don't have the proper equipments, you can't um, you know, make the 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 food fast enough. And you could, if you have the proper equipment, you could use, you know, I've been in kitchens where it's just me and another um cook. And we're feeding over a thousand uh people because we have the proper equipments to keep up with it.
That does bring me to my second question, which was you were talking about the percentage increases over here. And I was wondering, are there any projections for where that might plateau off? Because you, there's big increases, but we're far from, you know, in the seventy percent. Is there an expectation for it plateau off or is the limitation really the facilities at the moment? And if we had better facilities, we would plateau off closer to a hundred percent or something?
I would say the facility is one thing. Um you know, um the first thing that kids are here for is the curriculum, right? So the curriculum time um puts into eating time because now you're you know, you have three um meal periods or four meal periods where they're short. So I'm going in there and I look and I'm like, oh, there's a line. I'm not gonna have meal. But if there's no line, then you can just jump in, have a meal and and go back to your classroom. So it all comes down to how fast we can um move the um the kids through the line. Right now, we're moving them about about twelve kids every minute and fifty seconds because they have to scan their, um you know, they're about to punch their numbers in. If we could change that to a scanner, like how they have in the college where they just they go through, they swipe or they scan, then that um it limits that uh timely putting um putting the numbers in and that increases the numbers that go through the line.
So I think what I'm hearing you saying is, is we're still not serving all the students that we could or should.
We're we're still.
And that's a facility and and condition. The last thing I have was thank you for talking about from scratch because my recollection from a previous conversation was that perhaps the vast majority or all of our food was pre-prepped and we were just heating. And so I'm happy.
Some some of it, some.
I I thought it was a lot of it. And so my my question for you is I assume the hope is that looking more from from scratch?
Yes.
And and I also assume that there are uh uh equipment um uh implications of that as well.
Yes, the the equipment is gonna play a big part in that because um storage, right? Um you you have a raw chicken coming in, you have to have proper storage for it, you know. You have to have separate storage or um you're gonna have a lot of people getting sick. So it takes a longer time to cook uh foods from from raw um as well, so, yeah.
And by the way, congratulations on that uh fruit and veggies grant. That's that's really terrific.
Thank you.
We should rate continued success so we can maintain.
Yes, yes, we are having uh success with it. The kids are very happy. Uh Voile Avenue is one of the schools that, you know, they take advantage of the program. Um they, you know, everything they doubled. In terms of what we buy, we buy two one case of apple for all the schools, it's two down there because more kids are participating, so, yeah.
Thank you. Then I assume we'll get a chance to see the inventory report at some time?
We actually have a a drawing to um off the high school. Um what it um can look like as well, so um.
I'd like to see some long-term projections that if we are going to increase so that we can actually serve everyone. What's what's the timeframe? What kind of um budget uh increases, sorts of things? I would love to see that.
You know, we go through different areas, you know, modernization of the track and the
No, no, I would say, I'd say.
Modernization of the, you know, science labs and I mean, I think, you know, the the modernization of our kitchens is.
Right, but is that a, is that a one-year thing or could could we just space that up of five years? I'm just looking for some sort of projection that way, that's.
Yeah, I see the numbers, right?
So we can get to more than just the high school. Because I know you're referencing the high school, but when you talk about scanners, I'm like, that would be edge uh elementary school dream.
Yep.
Those little little kids trying to punch in their numbers, it's a nightmare.
We 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 do that right now um in some of our elementars. Like for the um the younger kids that don't know their numbers, we have um scanners on the on paper and we just scan them and go through.
They scan, what scans?
Uh there are their names and everything. There's like a barcode um on the printout from type. Yeah, the staff has it and they they go through, photograph um our ones, they just go through and scan um, yeah, so, you know.
For a school that, you know, provides free lunches to everyone, why why do we need to scan students? Why don't we just say?
Uh again, because um the USDA, they, you know, they have their regulations and they wanna make sure that the funds are being used properly and we're not just, you know. Like, I can make the numbers up, right? I can say, you know what, I I serve six hundred kids today and I only serve um twenty. Or if I have leftovers, I can add those leftovers to it and say that, well, you know, we had a hundred leftovers, but we add it to our numbers and say now we have five hundred um students served, so.
But if you if you have another mechanism, you can count trays or something, right? I mean, um you could, um.
No, no.
No, when it's separated, the idea, they don't trust us.
No. And um you you wanna um you can serve, have the kids go through the line um for like, say, breakfast, but the problem that we're gonna run into when the state comes in and they start looking at things, everyone has a different way. We have different people. They're like, why are you not doing this? And they start digging and digging and digging. It just creates more and more problems. It just makes sense to just run into the line. And I I for one, I think it's um just teaching um kids how to be responsible when you have an involvement in the line, yeah. Thank you. Yes.
Um I mean, I I, you know, I get school lunch and I go and I sometimes, I mean, and I agree with most of what you're saying is, like, you know, it does take a long time to get food. Sometimes you only have like ten, fifteen minutes to even eat because it takes such a long time for you to go through. And even then, I remember, and this was last year, I remember having to wait because there wasn't enough food cooked. Enough, you know, you know, yet. So you had to wait a lot longer.
Right.
And you still had to wait. So, you know, I agree in a lot of that and like you know, it's it's kind of something that a lot of kids just tend to just not get lunch.
They're not, they they don't go because they have to wait. Like, uh for example, the high school that we we have um and the numbers that we're doing in the high school, we should have about about six to eight um combi um ovens or convection ovens um there. Right now, we have four. And sometimes, you know, if we have one that goes down, now you have three. So that creates problem when it comes to cooking, pizzas. Um if you have multiple items that are being cooked in the oven, because that's the equipment that we have. We have four um convection ovens and we have a steamer. That's it. And that's what we have to work with. We're actually working miracles. The kitchen that I that I'm from, we have three um large kettles, um you know, you know, from ninety to sixty to forty gallon um kettles. We have brazers, we have big double stack uh steamers. Um we have um brazers, we have range, we have so many different equipments. And, you know, within four hours, we can serve two thousand um college students. And that's just from from one hotline. We're not talking about having pizzas and and uh french fries and grill stations and salad bars and food bars and things like that. So we can do it, it's just that we just have to you know, we just have to keep at it. Because um before I came, you know, um you had um school lunch directors that had the same plan. They, you know, they leave. And like I say, I'm here for the long haul as long as we're pushing um to make it better, you know? Yeah.
I also just have one more question. Because I know I have a couple of friends who are, you know, they're like, they can't have gluten. So have we looked at like having more gluten-free options for people who have?
We actually do have um gluten-free options. I'm surprised uh we don't get approached a lot um for those because we do have, you know, items that we make that are gluten-free, but we can provide um you know, s- specialty items if we have those uh participation. If we know that those uh students are gonna come, you know, three times a week, um every day, then we we would provide that every single day to make sure that that they come here. Because, you know, they're not cheap products.
Yeah.
So it would make sense to just make it and not have in the um, you know, the market for it.
Spins talk to you to make, you know, let them know that.
Um they can talk to me. Um they can talk to the nurse, they can talk to the cook manager.
Okay.
Yeah. I actually have, um there's a family that's um that's here, um. They um they're vegetarians and, you know, I send a menu to them, they look at the menu um and decide if they wanna partake or not. And I've offered to make specialty items with them and they're like, no, it's it's okay. As long as there's something on the menu. So we try to provide things. You know, this is an elementary, so we try to provide, you know, salads, um things like that, colder items. But we are looking into, you know, go into more um kosher um items like that. Um I believe that US food will um start stocking on some of those items uh moving forward. Yeah, so, yeah.
I think I'm gonna end with that. We're gonna put in for a smoker, so you don't have to cook it. Other than three hours, we can do a nice eighteen hours. So that's the smoker, um yes. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thanks.
Alright, up next, uh Mr. Work, the Technology Committee update. Rick Work, Director of Technology, CLOX. So alright, so technology education and technology services. And just to bring you up to speed, on this screen, that looks really, really tiny. So these are two of my goals for the coming year. Um the top one is focused on our grade, I'll see, eight through twelve technology education. I'm actually gonna expand that to grade seven because I also work with the laws department, labor and workforce skills. So that goal was really focused on looking at our curriculum, doing vertical articulation, moving it forward with P-Tech standards and such. The second goal um is a relatively new one to my goal list. Uh this is about artificial intelligence and we focused on generative AI. So when I get down to the instructional technology committee, we'll talk a little more about what we're doing with that. We're in the middle of a survey um that uh we're going to each building and asking our teachers about their understanding and use of generative AI and how our students might be using it and how it can work with those things. So those are the two of my guiding goals. As we go through this, let me back up actually. Um that seal up top, Confident Learner Responsibility System are um the profile of a learner for High Park. I'm hoping you'll see elements of that as we go through this because that's what it's all about. Working on those things throughout the different programs that I help to um, I get to work with those teachers on. So, first thing, elementary libraries. So one of the roles of life that I have is working with K twelve librarians. I've broken this part up into the elementary and secondary. So for the elementary, that chart that's there was, represents a couple of hours this summer of the four elementary librarians. And by the way, one of them's been here for more than ten years. And then the other three have all been here for less than five years. Noel Morgan's about three or four years. And Ray Ripholz has been part-time for about two or three years. And then Angie Webb, who works for R.F.R. Smith, was a brand-new hire this summer and she joined the curriculum writing just so she could work on this piece. We have always had tech time grades three, five, where the librarian worked with every, with the third and fifth graders in classes. We had K two as we could make it happen. The goal of this work was to actually formalize what does tech So in the past, that meant we wanted to be collaborative. So the classroom teacher would come in and say, I'm working on a social studies report, what can you do for me? And the librarian would come up with a technology connection to that. Now, we formalize with digital citizenship as part of it, keyboarding as part of it. So there's different elements that they're working on. So K two, digital citizenship, working with Chromebooks, starting on typing, just finding your name, right? Um navigating websites, really basic information. And we parse it out because of scheduling limitations with staff availability, because they teach library classes in addition to the tech classes. And as you all know, North Park is a very, very busy building. Um just in sense of equity across the buildings, we have to limit what we could do with K two. So we start with second grade. They get um eight classes spread out once a week. They get eight classes and then we go to first grade, then we go to kindergarten. Even within that time, as our librarians have more time, they'll meet with those classes. This is the minimal expectation. They often go far above the odds. For grades three, five, we we boil it down to, again, digital citizenship, teaching our kids about their footprint on the web. How to search responsibly, how to use academic tools responsibly. A little bit of coding, they always, uh the hour of code is always a good fun one the kids like to do. Um basic research and again navigating websites. So that was that was eight hours of work. They were incredibly focused. Um, basic research and again navigating websites. So that was, that was eight hours of work. They were incredibly focused. In addition to that chart, they've created um lesson suggestions and even some lesson plans that they've shared with each other that they use. So I'm really proud of the work they've done. They wanna keep doing more with this because they'd like it to become a really good program. Um, book circulation, just so you know where we are. Um, that's actually the number of books that were signed out at each building this past school year. What, and when I charted this over the past couple of years, our pre-pandemic levels were ju- were a little bit higher, but it's good to see us coming back to that because if you look at the chart, it's great, great, great than this nosedive in twenty twenty for some reason. And then we came back and now we're back up to pre-pandemic levels, which I feel really good about. So fifty-nine thousand books signed up by K-five students last year. What's nice about all librarians is they're not putting limits on how many books kids can sign up. You wanna take out five, you take out five. You wanna hold it for four weeks, hold it for four weeks. And constant circulation, so it's really good to see that. Another nice note is ebooks are gaining. So eighteen hundred and twenty-three ebooks, we have something called Sora that we subscribe to. It's free for kids. They can sign out an ebook, read it, bring it back. Some of the buildings still have the old um takeaways. It had audiobooks that the kid could take a takeaway device, listen to the audiobook. So um, the circulation in the elementary is a really, it's a good, proud point, I would say. Secondary libraries, um, you know, vertically, things move up. So our goal at the elementary is teach the kids, you know, the basics, how to look for books, finding books of your interest in middle school. It continues that path and right up until the high school. So um, on this page, I gave you a couple of different things. On the far left, Havland's Information Fluency Course, just to talk about that briefly. That was something Eric Shaw and Daniel Freed, the librarian, started a couple of years ago. And it really is teaching kids not just how to navigate website, not just digital digital citizenship, but really about how to look at information on the web and determine if it's authentic or not. So those are really good analytic skills that we're looking for. Um, and Danielle does an amazing job with that class. She sees every sixth grader over the course of the year and they work on just digital fluency and digital literacy. Um, she also has a really great makerspace, so the sad part of that picture is all those devices are Chromebooks that were destroyed uh or broken or dropped. And she said, can I have about fifty? I said, sure, we have plenty. So I gave her fifty damaged Chromebooks. And the kids in the makerspace had the opportunity to tear them apart and see what the inside workings of a Chromebook look like. And uh she does some really, there's connects towers that kids do, there's puzzles, really creative stuff. You go into her library and you look around, you'll see some of the work that students have done. So she does a great job of the makerspace. Um, makerspace is just something that we are focusing on in the libraries. I would say Danielle is really the model because she has a space for it, one. And she's been working with for a couple of years. Um, the circulation, again, you can see there, we're back to, again, pre-pandemic levels, which is great. Sixty-eight thousand books signed out by our K-12 students. And again, ebooks are gaining. The ebooks at the secondary, uh, it looks like a smaller number for half our population, but again, we have two or three buildings, the elementary, really pushing the ebooks. The secondary, they're available and I know that they're also pushing them, but hasn't quite come at the same level, but still pretty good. On the right, every year, um Tracy Angely at the high school publishes an infographic of her library circulation, the kinds of things they're doing in the library, the kind of projects she's doing. So as a teacher, she does not have assigned classes. If you pull up her teacher's schedule, it would be blank. What she does do is teachers, she recruits teachers, they come in. She co-teaches with teachers in the library on research skills, selecting the right book. Um, she's now got some podcasting stuff going on, which I think is really, have you seen that?
Yeah.
Because it's really cool. Matter of fact, she had purchased a little cheesy kit with four microphones a couple of years ago and using that. We were able to purchase her a really good pos- podcasting kit plus another cheesy one. So there's more and more kids are now available. That caught on and now we purchased a simple cheesy podcasting kit for every building. So they'll have one in each building to do podcasting. And there's already an elementary teacher in Netherwood like grabbing on the signal like, yes, I can do something in this with my kids' projects. So it's that kind of stuff. This group is phenomenal about collaborating and working together and finding new and cool ways to do things. My next group at Havland, I work in the Labor and Workforce Skills, OMEC, Omen Careers, right, Family and Career Sciences, and also the Technology Group, so three teachers in each of those. So seventh grade, every seventh grader takes the laws course. And it's personal financial management, which I I know this was a board interest a couple of years ago. They do teach the kids how to create a budget, how to write checks, they actually write checks. Um, they also work on things like cooking and sewing. And the cooking stuff is really neat because we're not just doing, you know, make, bake, to lask it like I did back in the middle school. They're doing healthy foods. Um, the kids are creating budgets, they're doing, when you walk in that room for a cooking thing, it's not chaos. Every kid has a job, they're doing things, kids are getting food, kids are chopping. It's really neat to see. As a matter of fact, as you may know, we have a hundred thousand dollar project this year to renovate that kitchen. And it's um, the teachers are really excited about that because they think it's really gonna help their program when it's all said and done. So big shout out and thank you for that. Um, and that program, it earns a half credit for our students as seven, half half high school credit for our students as seventh graders, which is phenomenal. That's a Labor and Workforce Skills credit that we um that gets applied to them. So it's really kind of neat and it's recognized by the state every year they file a report. Then eighth grade tech ed, um, it's gone through some changes, staffing changes in the last five years, two newer teachers. Uh, Brett Phillips is still there. Some of you may remember Mr. Phillips, right? Um, so the CO two, CO two cars, the model rocketry, um wood shop kind of stuff. Um, and then Gada Viyumia has come in and brought in three D printing and coding. And Robert Plow has come in and he's done some laser engraving and the hydraulic arms, which is that picture of the boys are both holding hydraulic arms. So getting into the basics of engineering. The coding work that Gada does is absolutely phenomenal. Um, so that that program is really going in some really new and interesting directions. And they're developing this great relationship with the work together and talking about, oh, we could do this together. So um, that's the tech ed program. Next group is the FDR Business Technology. So today is a great day to do this presentation because today the eighth graders, as you mentioned, were up talking to the high school teachers about their programs. And when they walked through the high school, they visited the gym, they visited the cafeteria, but they also visited the Winter Circle Project Lab where there are two shiny cars, one in complete disarray, the kids are curling building, and last year's very shiny green car. And you could see the excitement in the students' faces about that program because it does look really, really neat. Um, and then the other room they visited was um David Chakowski and Lisa Benato were there and they were talking about the marketing course for Winter Circle Project. And they were talking about digital photography and some of the engineering courses. All told, you can see all the course listings out there and I'll read them off too, but the pre-engineering courses, basic technology. Um, the cabinetry course kicks off this spring, which is that, that was a new course proposal we did last year. So kids can now take basic wood shop, advanced wood shop, or cabinetry. So we're really excited about what that may look like. And uh Chad McBroom's actually even more excited because he said, we could do a boat building shop. And I said, yes, so. Um, the media technologies, uh, part of the Winter Circle Project, I did wanna show you really quickly, something the students have just done. So part of the Winter Circle Project, there's three, three strands of that program. The build, which is really exciting, very cool, and everyone loves it. We go race the car and we did really well this past year. I think we came in second overall, should've come in first, just saying.
Car was the best car.
The car was my favorite. I have friends at Alfred State College in the automotive tech program. And they were sending me pictures throughout the whole thing, saying, this thing is amazing. Yes, it is. They did a really, really great job with that car. Um, and it sold to one of our staff members because they didn't want to let it go. That's why we still have it. So the goal is to have a finished car in the shop, plus the one they're building as a recruiting tool for students. And they hope to put it in some of the parades here in Hyde Park somewhere down the road as well. So, so me touring the boat that Chad built, so.
Did you think they sold the car?
They, to one of our staff members. And then they will sell it this coming year. So they always have a new car, the the new shiny car to show next year's class what they're gonna be building. It's kind of, most schools, they build the car, they sell it, that funds next year's car. This one, they were able to kind of make it a little bit different. So now you've got this exemplar sitting there. And it really is an exemplar of the the wood grain dash and all that kind of stuff. It's very nice. So there's three prongs to uh Winter Circle. It's the car build. It's the marketing class, which Lisa Lisa Benata um manages. And it really is management because the kids are out raising funds, recruiting sponsors, really working out the community and learning how to do marketing. And then there's the media technology, which is Derek Zimmerman. And I wanna show you this, the kind of stuff that they're doing. Is this going to work?
Yes.
Roosevelt Racing is a winter circle project where schools compete and race other cars. There are three parts for the class that Winter Circle does. They don't just create and build on the next level, it's one of the final components.
Uh, this is, I'm gonna, uh, this is the build part of the Winter Circle Project.
This is the visual strategy side of it. At the end of the year, all branches of the, again, other schools in the area, speaking to win and face the best cards, as the best social media content and the best marketplace. Thank you everyone.
So I just wanted to give you a really quick clip of the kind of work that they're doing in that program. Um, what's really nice, and you've heard about the Winter Circle Project, so I won't go on too much about it, but it's not just the classwork, it's not just building a car and making videos. I do videos every week, by the way. Um, and it's about racing the car. Um, there's also, where a circle comes in and works with the kids on personal goals and goal setting and future. So it's this nice holistic program where kids really get involved in not just building a car, but analyzing themselves and their future and their goals. So, uh, it's a shout out to Mike Rowella for really bringing this program into the district. He did an amazing job working with uh. All right, instructional technology. So um, my my, I'm a little department of eight people. So Susan Ardalon is our technology integrator. Susan was a third grade teacher at Ralph R. Smith for many years and then jumped into tech integration. And you can see from the infograph on the right, that was last year's work, a hundred and thirty PDs, over three hundred appointments. Now, an appointment is any teacher in this district, any administrator, secretary, whoever, can go to our webpage, click on the tech integrators website, get to Susan's calendar and book an appointment with her and say, I want you to come and model teach a lesson for me. I want you to co-teach a lesson for me. I wanna do a one-on-one training session. I'd like a PD with these seven people. Whatever it is, if Susan can do it, she will come over and do it. And she's never said no yet. She meets, she offers to me with every one of our new employees to get them set up with how to log in, how to navigate our website, how to get to the tools that you need, really checking to make things work for them to get them on their best foot. So she is an amazing individual and you can see um the kind of work that she does and all the different programs, that program list is constantly expanding. She's done a great job. Um, the Instructional Technology Committee, there are two people here on that committee. Thank you for joining us last time. So we just sent out a survey. So the Instructional Technology Committee sent a survey out and we asked um our staff a couple of questions. What are the challenges you're facing this year? What would help you next year as far as a technology initiative? And what is dream big? What is something you would like technology to pick up for you to make your, take your teaching to the next level? And I just wanna share some of the things they thought of about more innovative technology, robotics. We have elements of that, but more interested robotics. VR classics, virtual reality field trips, going to Paris. Um, gamification. I had never heard of this one, but Assassin's Creed Discovery Tour is a whole social studies thing where you use the Assassin's Creed game to tour the world. And that one just, I was like, wow, that sounds cool. Translation tools are a very big interest. And we have some teachers right now kind of doing some neat stuff with, they can have a slide up on the screen. And while they're talking, it's translating to whatever the native language is for the child in the room. So we have some things we're trying to get better for. We've got a three D ceramic printer, which sounds neat, and a digital planetarium. So the teachers are thinking about ways that we can make our technology better, to be perhaps trying to do some more innovative things with it. So, and then the last, the question there is, how comfortable do you feel with generative AI in your classroom? And you can see the results there. What that graph tells me is we have to allocate some time to real training and professional development for our staff. The biggest anxiety around generative AI right now?
Was less comfortable to more comfortable or more comfortable to less?
One is less comfortable, the five is most comfortable. Use, and I would say five is like, I'm I'm using it now and I could teach someone how to do it. And a one is, I'm afraid of this thing because I have no idea what it means. Um, and when I lost my train of thought, I'm so sorry. No, it's okay. It's my bad because I shouldn't have been able to hold on to it. Um, what it tells me is we need to dedicate more time to training because one of the biggest fears that I learned in the survey is they're not so much worried about how to use it themselves because they can figure that out, they're smart people. It's how do we teach our students to use generative AI ethically and responsibly? And I think that is our biggest challenge in education right now. Is it's so easy for a kid to type in the question the teacher gave them and generative AI solves it for them. Um, and the detection tools that are out there are not foolproof. They're not gonna pick up everything. They're gonna pick up a lot, but not everything. So helping teachers help students to use this tool wisely is probably the biggest challenge that teachers are concerned about. And then just the stuff, um, and in the past, you've heard me, this was my entire presentation, this kind of uh slide. About a little over eight thousand devices that we're managing, a hundred and sixty-three titles, software titles, bulk of those are instructional. Um, as you can see the breakdown on the side there. And our network infrastructure, we still have a very robust district network, wireless PA systems, um, and we're improving it all the time. Right now, we're looking at projects to add to replace Havland's aging and falling apart PA system because it is falling apart. Um, it involves doing a little cabling work at Havland, but we have mostly equipment now ready to do that project. So we're trying to get some things aligned for that. Um, we're auditing our our district camera network constantly to figure out where are our blind spots, what needs to be fixed and replaced. Um, and just a shout out to the amazing team that I get to work with in the Instructional Technology Team, two of them right over there, Michelle Vesnia, Department Secretary, and Bonnie Calafano, uh, Net Protection, Chance Caswell. Um, I have to look at the names because I just, as we all know, I blank on names. Um, it's Susan Ardalon, our tech integrator I mentioned, Pascal Luiz joined our district as a uh our data person, and she's absolutely fantastic. Uh, Chance Caswell, Jan and Katrina are both our Chromebook people who keep us floating. Michael Davis is not only our help desk person, but when you see those videos on the website, that's Michael Davis. He's also a podcasting expert, so I've already introduced him to Tracy Angely as a resource for the kids working on podcasts. And we're, you know, very fortunate to have Meg Connolly Burkhart subbing in to help us out at the high school with Chromebooks and Roseanne Davidson at the middle school with Chromebooks. So it really is a team approach to everything that we're doing um in instructional technology and um believe. Oh, yes. Oh, yeah, how about that? On the right, that's an actual network closet that used to exist in this building. That was the main data closet in the high school. That, that's a travesty. Um, and um through a lot of hard work, and I literally do mean like lifting heavy things into places and uh some allocation of money and some work, we were able to turn that into a much better setup. Bandwidth, just so you know, that's what our daily bandwidth looks like. That's people connected to our wireless network. We pay for the one gig line. That's what we pay for. We can burst, go over that just for moments, up to two gigs. So we're right where we need to be with our bandwidth, but we're constantly monitoring that every day. And it looks like we're starting to creep over that one gig line. We will need to up that. It's not a horrible cost, but we're keeping an eye on it. Oh, yes, and then the help desk. This is Michael Davis. This is his main job, but the entire team supports this. Um, last year, twenty-four, oh, it's twenty-four thousand six hundred six help desk tickets. There are right now two hundred and thirty-eight. Actually, it's downward, down about one eighty right now. About one hundred of those are mine. Um, our average resolution is seven point one days. Usually, it's about two days. We're, we're, we're pretty good at getting most of them cleaned up. Greatest number of tickets are about account management, new person, leaving person, because we have to do both sides of the equation. When they arrive, when they, when they leave, we wanna make sure we shut everything down, just for their safety and ours. And then hardware damage, um, you know, Chromebooks, they travel, so they they get damaged. Um, and we had seven thousand eight hundred and fifty-eight tickets last year from non-Hide Park District emails. Those are typically parents. Parents looking for assistance with Parents Square, uh, Parent Portal, or looking for help for their kid or whatever it may be. Some of them are also companies, but I would say a good seventy-five percent to eighty percent of those are just parents looking for assistance. And a note about that, if you look on other school district websites, you won't find a link to their help desk. We are one of the few districts that actually makes, we are a community resource. We want our parents to call us and ask us for help. I was asked what the spring play was this coming year and I had to say I didn't know. So um, as an anecdotal note, we do promote our help desk. Um, and we do provide support for a lot of our parent and community resources, including event manager, which is how groups reserve spaces in our district. And there you go. I am not doing the roll over budget. Any questions about anything, libraries, Omen Careers? Any questions about anything, libraries, human careers, technology.
Just, you mentioned running cables for the P A system at Havland, why not wireless?
The, the speaker systems themselves, it's a clock, it's a loudspeaker, and it has to be wired in order to get power. So it'd be great to be able to do them wireless, but unfortunately, we can't do wireless energy at this point, so it has to be a wireless connection. But we've got honestly, um, Chance Caswell, as he's, as we're getting new equipment in. Most of it is wireless now because it's just such an easier technology to use, and we have a really good wireless network.
One question, a lot going on this trip. And I, I agree with you that, that teaching students how to ethically use A I is, is a serious issue. The other one that I, that I worry a lot about. Digital literacy is the right term, but teaching students how to critically assess content. And is that in the curriculum somewhere, where is it in the curriculum, did I miss it?
No, you're right on, um, digital citizenship is a piece of that.
That's what I'm wondering about. But that's at the lower, right, the.
Well, actually, they hear about it, um, a little bit in kindergarten, digital literacy at kindergarten is really focused on, um, you know, don't give your name away to strangers, right? Um, by the time Danielle's class at the middle school, they've heard more and more about visual and your digital footprint is the term we keep using. You know, what you do online doesn't go away because you hit delete or you clear history.
Right.
You know, we love that when kids, oh, I cleared my history, I'm safe, no, I've got Google server logs that tell me exactly what you've done ever since, so. Um, so teaching is that, when Danielle gets them at the middle school, she spends a lot of time teaching them about digital footprint, about how to be safe online. Um, stranger danger online is a very real thing, right, how to help kids spot that, so yes.
And that's great, but what I'm really concerned about is assessing content. How do I know?
Yes, yeah, so in Danielle's course, that's one of the focuses that she does, so she spends many, and I just watched one the other week. And I wish I could recall exactly what it was, but it was really about, go to this website. And well, how can you tell that this is a good resource versus this is not a good resource, evaluating resources that are on the web. And you know, there's all sorts of bullet pointed charts to tell you how to do that, it's her teaching the kids to use those charts. Well, when they're faced with, because you know, first things go to Wikipedia and just do whatever you want. Look at the Wikipedia sources, go to those sources is probably a better way to go.
One question on the help desk, um, do we look at trends like, you know, twenty four thousand tickets, do we try to say like, boy, we have ten thousand asking the same question?
Oh, yes.
Put like a self-help F A Q thing out there so that we could kind of ease the number of calls.
Yeah.
Number one, number two is have we explored like chatbot technology, right, I mean. You know, most places we interact with now for help, you know, customer service, the first point of entry is always a chatbot to answer some questions. And then if that doesn't answer it, um, you go to a real person. Um, and, and the technology is pretty darn good these days.
It is, it's getting better and better.
So I don't know if we've looked at it to, you know, kind of help with all the numbers here.
Yeah, so what I can respond is trends, yes, that trend on the bottom is number of tickets, and that's going way back to twenty twenty, that's when we first started the instant I Q system. We had other, we have the tickets history from before that, but I just figured back to twenty twenty is fine. And you can see the number of tickets is gradually increasing, that spike, by the way, that rhythmic spike is September.
Yeah, but, but if we have like ten thousand of these saying, how do I turn on my Chromebooks? Do we put an F A Q to say, you know, look here first before you open a ticket and, and how do you turn on the Chromebook, push a button? So it saves ten thousand calls or tickets being opened.
That's a goal, I will be honest with you, so. One of the things I like about instant I Q and the reason we moved with the platform is I can categorize any question that comes in in certain ways. So Chromebook, cracked screen, it, you know, what's going to happen with that, so now we have routing, so that comes in, it goes to this person. The goal is that, um, and one of the things I've tasked Michael with is actually creating uh, documents and self paced guides, so I can't connect to a printer, well, here's what you do. So having those documents that would be, that would pop up as you type something in, is time, is really what it comes down to, we just.
That's where a chatbot, if he creates the backend material, chatbot, how do I do this? His data feeds into the chatbot.
And that's, again, that's the goal, you know, we're not there yet, but we're trying. Yeah, the, the first thing is to get our data correct, and by that I mean, um. So when somebody puts in a ticket, they could be conscious and go and say, okay, this is about Parents Square, this is about Infinite Campus. Ninety percent of our tickets come in as other, and then we have to go through, categorize it properly. And then when we do actions on tickets, we actually have to put the actions in, otherwise you don't have the data, so it's, it's just. Getting our data practices down first and how we do things. And then I think we can get to that, again, we're, we're starting to build a help library, but just, we're not very far along in the process, yeah.
Thanks. And so I would say thank you, Rick, we're very happy to have you with us, of course. Um, Katie and I attended the most recent tech committee meeting, so thank you Katie for attending. At the meeting, we talked about the difference between A I and generative A I, so. Maybe for the people at home, if you could educate us, what's the difference, just so we know, because it ties into policy.
Right, and um, it is interesting, many districts have created policies on artificial intelligence and generative A I. We have not, and my recommendation last year to Dr. Roma was, let's not. And I, and I will tell you my own person, and I'll happen to be overwritten, but my own personal philosophy is this, A I, generative A I are tools. And if we demonize them by making a policy, it becomes bigger than what it is, it is a tool. We just need to teach kids to use that tool responsibly. Now, that's my own take on things and people kind of went with me last year, that could change, but right now, my own belief is, we treat it more than it is. We create it as this thing to be afraid of or a thing to be really concerned about, and I don't know if that's where we want to go with A I. So artificial intelligence is, and this is not my area of expertise, I am learning along with most other people. We do have an in district, uh, I would call an expert, David Chikowski at the high school is absolutely brilliant. He, uh, he's gone and done workshops around the state on this topic, and he's done workshops for our own teachers, so he really does know what he's talking about. Artificial intelligence is this big catchall term, and basically A I looks at big sets of data and can group and sort and make decisions, right? Generative A I takes that same information, but then can create something. So you all know, you can go and say, I need to have a board presentation on the technology initiatives from twenty twenty five, and it will generate something much like this, right? Um, that's generative, generating, generative A I, as opposed to just pulling and compiling data and, and looking at it that way. Does that explain it, do you think?
Sure, and I, I think that's, you can say more. That was the important point, Katie can jump in here, you know, a lot of people are a little scared of A I, but we said, A I in general, that's spell check. Spell check is A I because that's a program code, right, generative A I creates something and so forth, so. So you have to first get to know the new terminology, this is new ground for all of us, so it's a very lively conversation and so forth. Um, I thought your presentation was excellent, I just thought you're uh, kind of selling yourself a little short because with all these great things you're saying. You're not mentioning anything about keeping us safe with cybersecurity, you're not talking, talking about submitting a, a tech plan to New York State every three years. You're not talking about all the software and data privacy agreements that you have to check each and every year, um, interfacing with D C B O Cs. You know, you mentioned a little bit about user accounts and so forth, and the smart bond. So the tech director position is twenty four seven, so we're very happy to have Rick because all these things he mentions were great. But it doesn't constitute the majority of what he does here, it's, it's, it's things that are instructional and trade terrific. But all this stuff, he probably does it on his weekends and nights and everything else and so forth, so thank you, Rick. Um, any update, we did talk about um, multi factor authentication, we mentioned that at the last board meeting. And how our staff has been getting on it, and the board will be coming.
Yes, yes, and uh, we're rolling out, we, so we were surprised. By the number of people who refuse to use their personal cell phones for M F A. I, to me, it's just easy, here to open, you're done, right? Uh, most, uh, most of our staff opted for the F O Bs out of concern for personal safety, um, they were worried about phones being subpoenaed and things like that. So um, we were overwhelmed by the request for a number of F O Bs, so while we had planned to roll out, we would be done by now, we had to wait. For an additional shipment of F O Bs to come in, so at this point, the high school is the only staff that has not been rolled out, we're getting those organized right now and inventoried. We're hoping in the next week or so to get those out there. Um, from there, we have to move on to transportation and other groups, so the, the, the plan is, every adult. Will be required to use M F A, multi factor authentication. Um, I would say no later than, let's say, spring break to buy me some breathing air, it'll be before then. Um, what I found interesting about Craig's um, thing is talking about the swipe cards. Because if we did give students swipe cards, now I have M F A for students. I have something that we can use for, because that's what everybody is struggling in, it's great that we've got our staff done. But now we've got this entire, the largest percentage of our district population with no protection, and we get alerts all the time from Google. This child's logged in from Chile, that kid's not in Chile, their password's been leaked on some site, so we have this open. This open way into our district right now, now they can do minimal damage with a student account. But still, it's a vector, and you want to cut those off. By bringing in I D cards that he could use for lunches, we could use for passes around schools, we could use for M F A for students, we now actually created another. Safe place for everybody, so yeah, acknowledging the cybersecurity work, because that is. It's, it's the stuff that keeps us up at night, is a cybersecurity piece, because nobody wants to be that district that was taken down by a ransomware attack. Or the Power School data breach, which I'm sure you heard about, if Infinite Campus were substituted into Power School, we'd be in a world of hurt right now. Thankfully, we're fine, but it is not so. I, Bobby, I'm going to mistell the story, but there was a board meeting, I believe you said, where we opened up a Google Meet. Yes, you had a call in to Google Meet, and Bobby noticed.
It was before the meeting, we were testing, I hear my voice, that's it, we were testing a call in. And for fifteen seconds, as I was getting it set up, I switched the meeting just to open, just to get it all set up. Within fifteen seconds, two bots in Chinese jumped on the meeting and jumped out. And it was all automated, but they were looking to see if they could get into an open meeting that had some sort of. Something going on that they could harvest.
That, it's harvesting largely, largely this stuff is about disruption. It's about disrupting the way we do business, the way we do work, they're not, most of them aren't out to actually offer the money or anything else, it's about disruption. So that's, thankfully, I work with brilliant people, and they do a phenomenal job at monitoring things and keeping us safe.
It's, it's information too, right, they, oh, yeah, if they get a kid's social security number, they could open up a bank account and know the kid doesn't have. Credit lock on, on their name, right, so.
Luckily, the only, well, I'm not going to say where we have social security numbers, but they are not in our student information system, so.
The other thing with M F A, that's a good thing, um, are, are we training staff because the, the trend actually is moving away from. Token based to passwordless, right, so what's happening is the bad actors are calling and saying. Hey, this is, you know, I T, can, we have a problem, can you give me the token off of your phone, and people are being nice and they give that token away. The latest Uber attack was, was just that. Um, so we need to also educate staff that it's not foolproof, you never give it away, tech is never going to ask for that number, never give that number away.
We recently had that exact example where a teacher, um, somebody got their password. And tries to log into their account and they got the power up notification, they said yes, they weren't on a computer, they just approved it because something popped, oh, sure, get that off my face. That could have been really, really bad. He caught it, we shut it down. It's that kind of stuff that's happening constantly, so yes, what, what we've been doing with this rollout, the team over there, they have been meeting with each staff member. And showing them how to use it and talking a little bit about this, so we're doing a little bit of education. Um, Susan talks about this kind of stuff, it's really about training, where we need dedicated time to do this kind of work. Um, and that's, you know, in short supply for everybody.
What do we use in Duo?
Yeah, yeah, so we should eventually see if they have like a F I O two solution where it's like a fingerprint scan.
Or the biometric stuff?
And, and you can't give that away, right, so that's like, my laptop has that, so I, I push it, I, I do a fingerprint scan. There's nothing I could give away to compromise it, or else I cut off my finger. Yeah, so the, uh, the Mid Hudson Rick, they rolled out multi factor for N D, our financial software. Um, and one of the pieces is we could use, you know, a cover, but there's also a U S B drive. And then you have to click the button, it's a physical thing that you just can't, right?
Ubekeep makes that.
The Ubekeep, that's the Ubekeep, yes, so.
But that might be some next phase two of M F A.
It's constantly evolving, how these things are going, so it's going to be fun to see what happens next. And I am seeing more and more laptops with, what features right now, it's got the fingerprint scanner on it, right? That little thing you got, our Chromebooks don't have that yet, but I would anticipate they're going to at some point. Anything else I can help with?
Impressed with the teachers that were talking about the generative A I and how it's kind of made their job harder because. One teacher's looking at the history of the paper being written, it is. I guess a disability to not have a tool that's tremendously effective for teachers to. Like, figure out what is generative A I and what is authentic writing.
Yeah, and that's, you know, what we're teaching teachers to do right now is if the kids write documents in Google Docs, you can go to the version history.
Right.
And if it all just showed up magically at Sunday night at one thirty A M. Probably generative A I, right, but if there's revisions and edits in that, in that history, now you've probably got an authentically written document. Um, Turn It In, which is a program that we use, our high school teachers use that, kids will write essays, they use Turn It In, that has an A I detector in it. Even the experts will tell you that A I detectors are not foolproof.
Right, that's what they were saying.
And, and there's, the worst part, I think in my mind, is the false positives. It's, you know, you miss a couple of A I's, but that poor kid that actually wrote that essay and then was told that's A I, that to me is the bigger problem. Um, and that's where I struggle with A I detectors. They're never going to be a hundred percent, but boy, what a shame to knock a kid down like that.
Yeah, but part of the problem is now A I, generative A I is smart enough to say, get around the detectors.
Yes.
It's like a radar detector, detector, you know, kind of getting, getting around those, it's.
Yeah, well, one of the things we do during our lunches is sometimes we'll play around with the A I stuff to see how good we can get around it, and how, how well we can play around with it, just to see.
Well, doesn't Turn It In give you the source, because I use it at the college level and it's, when I check. When I check papers, it will highlight sections and say, this came from this place or this came from this place.
I've never actually used it, I just buy it, so.
Yeah, it's trickier with the A I now, there is an A I module, but it's, it's still evolving. But as Mr. Zagorski said, these are real world threats, Fortune five hundred companies are struggling with this. And so we have Rick, and we have his team, and it's, it's a big battle, so we thank you for all you're doing, we thank you for your presentation. But we thank you moreover for those two A M alerts you're getting about cyber thirty, thirty threats I know about those, and just keeping us all safe. Thank you.
I have a question, but it's not really for you, it's just something that I, that I noticed that I wanted to bring up, just for us to keep an eye on, I noticed that. Um, introduction to Chromebooks starts in um, November of first grade, so that's when students are really starting to learn to use this device. But I do know that our kindergartners, before they come in and start September first, are tested on Chromebooks. So I just want us to look at that policy, um, New York State doesn't test kids, I know we use masks, but I just, I just want us to look at this, because this was kind of. Was, I was really surprised, how valid are those results going to be, I know everybody's going, oh, kindergartners aren't coming in prepared. But I think we have to look at our processes because. I don't know if Gordon knows this, but before, you know, that little oriente you used to bring your kids to, or they'd meet the teacher and they'd go, well, now they're, they, they sit at a computer and they're tested. And I, and I just think that if we're not introducing them to computers until November of first grade, which I think is appropriate. Why are we testing them on Chromebooks before they even start school? And are those um, accurate results, so I just want to put that out there because. Um, we might be, we've been looking at our processes and, and are we doing what's best for kids, and I would just question that policy.
Or I think that one's a great question to bring back to the other team, because this did come up.
That's, yeah, that's why I just did it here because.
Like, Ben Kreiser and Kim are veteran at this, but I, my understanding is, you know, obviously those results are standardized based on all kindergartners across the country, who are pretty much coming at the same kind of levels.
But just because everybody's doing it, doesn't mean we have to do it.
Oh, understood, but I, I think what you'll find is that the results are standardized based on kids with similar skills, similar prowess.
I guess my point is, if they're coming to a school for the first time, is that the best use of that time?
Yeah, yeah. Okay. Thank you all for your time, I appreciate it.
Thank you. All right, now the budgets roll over, you guys got thirty seven minutes. Seconds.
I heard it's first time.
I'm, I'm delirious over that.
Good evening, everyone. So today, uh, we are going to be presenting one of many budget presentations to the board and the community. Uh, this evening, one of the things that we want to accomplish, uh, is to go over. Some, some of the uh, foundation uh, pieces for the budget, first and foremost, we want to talk a little bit about the various types of funds that we have. We also want to discuss some of the uniform codes, um, as, as um. Prescribed by the New York State Comptroller. Uh, we also want to talk a little bit about how we are taking a, a measured approach to putting the budget together. Uh, really ensuring that there's alignment between our. Really ensuring that there's alignment between our spending as well as our goals and our strategic plan. And we then want to talk a little bit about some of the key drivers that are making our decisions, helping us make decisions. As you know, we always have to make tough decisions. We can't afford everything that is put before us. So we have to make sure that we have some sort of measured approach to identify what we're going to be moving forward, what we're going to hold off on. And so those decisions are certainly things that we are going to share with the board in terms of our, our thinking process. And then, and then lastly, Linda and I are working on talking a little bit about the budget process as well as next steps as we look forward to the subsequent months. So the first thing that I would like to do is talk a little bit about the fund types and the codes, and I'll pass it over to my partner, Craig.
Well, thank you. So we have a batch for another tour, another season. Um, this is our first, our first budget presentation. Every year, the very first budget presentation is the rollover. We're going to show you later what it would take to keep the budget exactly the way it is now, like all of the staffing, everything that we have in the budget, it would cost more next year because of inflation and also because of changes in our, the salaries, the salary steps that our staff is on. That's the only change that you'll see in the budget. It's really always just our starting point. But listed here are different funds that the district has. When Craig was up here earlier, he mentioned the funds being separate and like businesses. It's actually what they teach us in government accounting. We should be teaching every fund as its own entity. It's just separate and apart from each other. So the first fund that's listed here is the general fund. And that's the budget that we present to you. That's the budget that the board approves and that we ask the voters to approve. You'll see that the letter A is listed there after general fund. Whenever you see account codes that belong to general fund, they'll start with A. That's the fund type is a general fund. As Dr. Roman mentioned, that is prescribed by New York State. The Controller's Office is the authority for accounting for school districts in New York State. They tell us what account code structure to use and, and how to basically label every type of expense and revenue that we have. So again, the general fund is our main operating fund. It's voter approved and is funded mostly with taxes and state aid. Reserves are also included in the general fund. We normally present more comprehensively on reserves in June, but we do have another slide just to summarize the funds that we, or the reserves that we have here at Hyde Park. The second fund listed here is the school lunch fund or C. That is funded, now that we're CEP, it's funded mostly by the state and federal aid for the food service program. The way the food service program works is the district is responsible for paying for all of the food, all the supplies, the salaries, benefits, everything that it takes to run the program. We receive a certain set dollar amount for each lunch and each breakfast that we serve. So we have to be really efficient so that we're generating enough income to provide those free lunches to all and meals to all of our students. As we have more participation, we actually generate more money. There's a lot of overhead that doesn't change. So we do want to have more kids participating, not just because it's beneficial to them, but it's also beneficial to the program as a whole. The special aid fund is always designated with an F. That actually stands for federal for federal funds, but there are some state grants in the special aid fund. This is not voted on. These are the funds that we receive from the US Department of Education, the title grants. We also receive special education grants. They're known as the IDEA grants. And then occasionally we have other state grants like our UPK program is funded or recorded in the special aid fund. Capital projects is H. That is where we record everything that's used to renovate or if we were to build any new any, any new buildings, any structures, it would all be run through the capital projects fund. Capital projects fund requires a separate voter approval to have a project. We're also required to get state approval through the NICEid facilities planning group. We won't, wouldn't receive any state aid if we don't have the proper approval from them. And they do require architect and engineer designed projects. So that's why we always have to have a professional working with us to have those projects. And then the debt service fund is really just a holding fund. We have certain monies in there that we could only use to pay off debt. We do use a financial advisor and he advises us on when to utilize those funds so that we can try to keep our debt service the same amount from year to year. So we don't have a big any volatility in our debt service fund because it would have an impact on the tax levy if we change that year to year. And finally, the special revenue fund is for scholarships and any donations that the school district receives. So that's really a holding place for monies that doesn't belong to the school district. It belongs to students. So we record it there. We make sure that it's spent for the purpose that was intended when we received the donations.
One of the things that you can, you can imagine or visualize is like a dresser. Dresser has different drawers. You can't mix the socks with the T-shirts and the jeans with the T-shirts. So all of these have special designations as Linda outlined and we can't mix them.
And then this slide lists the different fund reserve types that the school, that Hyde Park School District has. Again, the State Education Department, in conjunction with the Office of State Controller, they issue guidance on what types of reserves that school districts could have. We do have an unemployment reserve. We could use those funds if for some reason we were utilizing or having our staff that leave the district utilize unemployment of more than in a normal year. We are totally self-funded for unemployment. We don't have insurance for that. Also for the retirement contribution fund, the state now allows school districts to have a reserve for both ERS, which is the pension system for non-certified staff, and TRS, which is the retirement system for certified staff. We're allowed to have a reserve for both. We would use these funds if there is a year where the rates shot up quite a large amount if we wanted to just that let it have such a big impact on the budget overall. We also have the employee benefit accrued liability reserve. You'll might hear people refer to it as EBLR. This is a fund that we can hold monies for future, basically compensated absences. So any staff that has vacation accrued, sick time accrued, that they would be entitled to be paid out either when they resign or retire would be kept in here. And again, it would be something that we could meet those obligations without adding a large amount to the yearly budget. The tax assurary reserve is a reserve that we use consistently, constantly. That can be used to pay off certain obligations and judgments that we get when taxpayers bring a case or a suit against the assessor's office, claiming that their assessment is too high. If there's a ruling in favor of the taxpayer, we would also, even though the suit isn't against the school district, we would have to also issue refunds if it applied to any school taxes too. New York State allows us to keep a reserve for that for up to four years of any claim. I would say this doesn't always cover us. A few years ago, we had a claim that was over ten years old that we had to pay out. And we did have to use our budget funds at that time because we're not allowed to keep tax or reserve funds for more than four years. Or for obligations that would be four years old. The repair reserve is, could be used for unknown repairs that might be really costly and that would have a big effect on the budget. There are a lot of legal obligations for the repair reserve. For example, if there's not a hearing to use it, the district would have to pay it back within a certain amount of time. And there's also requirements for the board to approve whenever we use the repair reserve. The capital reserve also has a lot of regulations around it. That's the funds that we save for future capital projects. The way we have our capital reserve fund set up is we could also use it for bus purchases. Again, that's something that's required to have voter approval in order to establish and fund the reserve. And then it's also required that we get voter approval to use any of those funds. Having the capital reserve also helps keep our tax levy for debt more stable because we could choose to use capital reserve funds if the voters approve it rather than borrowing money for some of our projects. And then finally, a few years ago, this is our newest reserve, the special education liability reserve. It's a reserve that we have just in case there's any claims that come against the school district regarding, regarding special education. And then this slide here is right from the uniform account code booklet from the New York State Office of the Controller. They do have a guide for school districts to use for county. They, like you said earlier, they do dictate to us which account codes we can use. So here, this is a general fund. Notice that by the fund A, the function is the next set of numbers, ten, ten. That's actually is for the Board of Education. The object is the next of numbers that could indicate a wide variety of things, but four, this is the year four hundred is for contractual expenses. When you look at the trigrid reports, you'll notice numbers like this. Whenever you see an account code where the object starts with one, that's payroll, two is equipment, four, like this is for contractual, five would be supplies, and then anything else would be like benefits. And then the location, we only use the location code for actual school buildings. There's a location code for each of our six buildings. And then we use the program code for our instructional directors that have expenditures for the schools. So if you ever notice a program code that's not zero, it's one of the instructional directors here at the district that was making a purchase. Now that next several pages list all of the uniform account codes by function. They're the four digits. I'm not going to read through everything, but we'll point out anything that starts with one is considered a general support. So it's not an instruction. You'll see it starts with the Board of Education. There's several codes listed here on this page. And it continues over here. The last general support code is the BOSI's administrative costs. And then we integrated the function codes that start with two, that would always be instruction. It starts with twenty ten, which is curriculum development and supervision. So that's basically Jessica's office and the staff that work for her and the items that she would purchase for the schools. Twenty twenty supervision in, in the school. So those are the principals' offices and their expenditures. Twenty seventy would be for training that we do in district. Twenty one ten is instruction. Twenty two fifty is for programs for students with disabilities. You can see the other codes listed here too. Again, anything that starts with a two is instruction. Little more codes here. And then finally, there's some other codes for the transportation and benefits. Anything that starts with a five in the function code is our transportation or bus garage. They're not listed under administration because they're technically considered part of the program. But because they're not directly tied with instruction, they have their own set of function codes. And then all employee benefits would fall within the nine, a level ninety ten to ninety eighty nine. And then finally, we do have inter-fund transfers. Now, earlier I mentioned that the funds are all like separate, like Dr. Roman said, you can't mix your socks with your pants. But there are occasion, occasionally times when the general fund does cover the cost of another fund. When that's in the budget, you would see that as an inter-fund transfer. And one example is when we have those hundred thousand dollar projects. It's something that Rick talked about earlier. We have one this year for Havelin, for the laws classrooms. The general fund is actually funding it, but we have to transfer that money to the capital projects because that's where we have to record it. So every year in our budget, we have a hundred thousand dollar transfer to capital. That's just one example.
So in terms of the key drivers, this is what I referenced earlier. So a lot of the decision making is based on these four principles. First and foremost, we want to make sure that we preserve programs and services for students. We want to ensure that these services follow the need. So based on students' needs, we want to make sure that we're providing students with supports that they need so that they can thrive. The next is improving efficiency and effectiveness. We want to ensure that there's a return on investment. We want to ensure that the things that we're putting in place are making the system better. And the last two bullets really are about financial sustainability. We want to ensure that we're forecasting down the road if we're implementing programs and supports that we can sustain those over time. We also want to make sure that there's a balance between the services and supports that we put in place and the impact on, on the taxpayers. And so that's a, a juggling and balancing act that as a leadership team we, we do and engage in. And it requires us to ensure that we have a, a foundation and principles that guide those discussions. That leads us into the budget alignment. So this past year, we had a large group that really helped us to revise our mission, vision, our core values, which are posted up. And, and those are part of our strategic plan and really are the, the sort of the, the North Star in terms of what we want our school system to aspire to. What do we want our learners to be able to accomplish after they graduate from FDR? So those things are outlined. We have specific goals and these are the areas that we focus on. We focus on student experience, wellbeing, safety and security, finance facilities, food service and future planning, family and community engagement. And last but certainly not least is professional development, ensuring that we have highly qualified staff to service and support our students. And so the budget development, we'll start with our rollover budget today and just want to hi, how are you? Just want to point out, as Linda had mentioned earlier, that this is just a starting point. It's a starting point. It, it's only going to depict, depict what will we do or what are, what are the expenditures when we just continue doing the same thing that we did the previous year? It has nothing in it in terms of revenues. It has nothing in the rollover in terms of what we might be reallocating or looking to do differently or continuing in terms of perhaps, you know, improving or expanding programs that we currently have in place. So again, it's just rolling over the budget from one year to the next. And again, just a starting point. No indication in terms of tax levy implications or anything like that.
So as you'll see, when we get to the expenditure budget, the rollover budget, there'll be only two items that are changed from last year. It's the salaries and, and benefits. We don't project all of the benefits when we do the rollover. We only project the health insurance budget. The health insurance rates are unknown at this time, but it's such a large expense for us. It's nearly twenty percent of our full budget that we do feel that we have to have a projection in there when we're showing the rollover. So we did project at eight percent. You'll see that, what, how that affects the budget later on. And as we get more information through our health insurance consortium, that number may change. We're also always looking at the health insurance bill every month to make sure that the people, the number of people that we budgeted for is accurate. So after the rollover, which we've actually already started on this next part, it's just not included in this presentation. I should say there's always a little bit of a lag because we're receiving new information every day at this time of year. So when we finalize this budget presentation, for the most part, we finished it on Friday. We did a few touch-ups on Monday. On Tuesday, we found out what the governor's proposal is for state aid. But by then we had already completed this budget and that's why we don't include it here. That information will be included in the next budget presentation. Anyway, we calculate the state aid and the tax levy limit. It doesn't always mean that we would have the tax levy at the limit, but we need to know what it is when we are planning the budget. So once we get that information, we can determine if there's a budget gap, which is basically would be the difference between what we're projecting for our expenditures and what we are expected to receive for revenues. If there is a budget gap, then we have to decide what we do with that. Are we going to fund it all with fund balance? Are we going to cut back on some of the expenditures or some of the requests that we have? Are we going to, perhaps sometimes the budget gap may go the other way where we're showing that we have too much in revenues? Does that mean we're going to have a planned surplus and put money into fund balance? Or are we just going to cut back on the tax levy to balance it out? Those are all decisions that we have to make as we go through the process. We are already receiving the requests from all the administrators for their budgets for next year. The cabinet does meet about that regularly throughout this time of year. It's a topic on all of our weekly meetings to look at the requests that we have, analyze them. There is a matrix that Dr. Roman's going to talk about. We put the information basically through a matrix, see how it applies. And if we need to determine if it's something that we're going to propose to the, the board to have in the final budget. But once all of that work is done, we do come up with a final proposal. But once all of that work is done, we do come up with a final proposal. Uh that final preliminary budget is actually the superintendent's recommendation, that's the formal of budget. It's his recommendation to the whole board. Uh if the board accepts that, the board would adopt the budget in April, and then it really becomes your budget, and then we would have the budget vote um in May that the district residents would vote on.
With regards to the matrix that Linda just mentioned, so uh last year uh we wanted to ensure that we had some sort of measured approach to analyze each of the proposals. This year, we took the same approach, we aligned the rubric to the strategic plan. And we had a rating scale for each of the domains, so um in the in the rubric, it it addresses the areas in the strategic plan such as the student experience, highly qualified sta- highly qualified staff, et cetera. Um then we added um innovation, equity, sustainability, data-driven decision-making, because those are all key factors in our mission, vision and core values, those values are embedded throughout the um those documents, and so we wanted to ensure that we we address that. Um that we had a a rating scale of highly aligned, aligned, somewhat aligned and not aligned, and uh the description for each. So that's the process that our team is gonna be going through, each of the proposals. Um and then we'll be reporting out to the board in terms of what those proposals proposals were. Um where we stand, we're gonna be communicating that with each of the administrators in terms of the request that came in. What will what would be moving forward, what would um not, or we reallocate, you know, certain uh resources that we currently have to better support um students in a different way. So all of those things are happening um as we speak, and um we're we're optimistic that we'll we'll get to um a place where we we can uh put forward to the board rationales for each of the decisions that were made.
Uh listed here are just some of the uh items that we really have to consider this year or that will have an impact on the budget this year. So we are expected to have the uh portion of the tax cap that's uh tied to CPI to be at the maximum of two percent. Uh the reason is that in two thousand twenty-four, the change in CPI was over two percent. Uh there are other factors that affect the tax cap, and we will have that information at a future uh board presentation to show the actual calculation. But those things include uh the change in the uh properties, uh if there's any new properties in Hyde Park. In our school district, we uh there's a factor to account for that so that we can actually tax those properties. But you also have to consider our capital tax levy, which is our debt service budget, and also any pilots that we receive. We uh showed originally, now like you said, this was before we had the governor's proposal when we prepared this, we had really early estimates on foundation aid that the New York State uh uh homeschool superintendent's put out, and it was showing no increase in foundation aid for Hyde Park, but the governor's proposal is actually showing a two percent increase in foundation aid.
I just wanna say something about that, one of the recommendations from the Rockefeller uh Foundation um was that uh part of the formula uh in in determining this this percentage uh start to evaluate whether or not the census, the two thousand census data is the most accurate to determine student need uh and student and 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 um wealth uh for a particular district. And so what they've done is now taken a taken that away and looking at more um nu- more current numbers as it relates to economically disadvantaged students um defined by by the state. So that that's been a significant change um for many districts um across the state.
And then the state aid budget actually doesn't become final until the legislature approves the budget. And in my time here, there's some years where they accept what the governor proposed, and there's many years too that they change it, so uh we're not sure yet like where that's uh would be leaning, but we won't find that out until uh probably April uh what the uh actual state aid for Hyde Park will be next year. Um TRS is the pension system that instructional staff belong to, this is always a a big item in our budget too. Uh the but the rates for TRS are expected to be between nine and a half and ten percent. So in my uh budget, I'm assuming it'll be nine point seven five percent. That's actually a little bit lower than the current ratio of ten point zero two percent. However, it's also important to notice that we'll have higher salaries because people are moving up on their salary schedules, so we'll probably show an increase for TRS. And then for ERS, which is the pension system for non-certified staff, there's actually an increase uh in that the rate for next year is expect expected to be sixteen and a half percent, and it's currently fifteen point two percent of the total payroll for non-certified staff. Um also, uh Duchess Bocis is one of our biggest uh expenditures too. Uh that budget is really not fine, I said he provided in March two thousand twenty-five, that's really when we'll have the um estimate of what our Bocis budget will be. Uh we just recently received the request from Bocis to start filling out um our request for next year. And then also, the final health insurance rates won't be set until March. Like I mentioned earlier, right now I'm assuming an eight percent increase, uh but that always changes from our earliest estimates too. I'll I'll say there are um we're noticing in our cons- we belong to a consortium for health insurance, we're noticing increased costs right now. Uh they're attributing attributing that to inflation, so we don't have a lot of uh of our members uh taking on more procedures or going to more visits, but they cost more. And then also, the prescription drug portion is increasing too, and they're attributing most of that to the uh GLP of drugs. So here is the actual uh rollover budget to budget. Uh we did wanna make sure that people understand this is just a draft, it's not our final version of the budget, so that's why we have a draft uh stamped on there, and also we added the note at the bo- bottom, so people that look look at this know this is not the final budget, this is just the beginning part. If we were to keep everything the same in our budget like we do right now, um it would cost the district an increase of four point four million dollars. That's assuming a three million dollar increase in salaries, assuming that everyone that works here now will be here next year um at the rates that they would be uh slated to earn next year. It doesn't account yet for any of the retirements, we always do see a savings in teacher retirements. Even if we replace all of our teachers, we uh replace them with uh people that have less experience and are paid less, so that'll be reflected in a future budget. And then also for the benefits, uh like I said earlier, um I'm only showing the incre- the expected increase in health insurance. So that bottom line, employee benefits includes health insurance, but also includes the pension costs, uh payroll taxes, workers' comp, life insurance costs, um anything uh that's considered an employee benefit is there. So that's why the overall increase doesn't show eight percent, but the portion that's for health insurance is an eight percent increase. So our current year budget for twenty four, twenty five, this is the budget that was approved, is a hundred twenty point nine million. And with the rollover, uh if everything were to stay the same, the budget would be a hundred and twenty five point four million next year, which is a three point six eight percent increase. Right, so uh the calendar here is the list of all the future budget presentations. Notice on the first line, the one that's grayed out is tonight, that's the rollover budget presentation. Uh we will have a presentation that of the future uh board meetings until it's time for the board to adopt the budget. Uh so our next presentation is in three weeks, on February thirteenth. Uh on February twenty seventh, we'll have all of the information needed to show the tax cap calculation. Uh we'll do another presentation on the thirteenth, March twenty seventh is when uh the board won't have to adopt the actual dollar amount of the budget, but you have to adopt that will have propositions. So there'll be most likely a proposition for buses, and there may be other propositions too. Um I think this year we have to have the proposition for the student board member, so. Sorry, you don't wanna, oh, okay, good, so we don't have to do that, but there may be a another uh proposition that we have. And the board just has to approve having those other propositions too. Um and then the board will actually adopt the the budget with the amount, um it's when you adopt the property tax report card on April twenty second. Uh that's a Tuesday, uh that will coincide with the Bocis budget. The reason we have that meeting on Tuesday is because all of the schools in Duchess County have to vote on the Bocis budget that night. Uh we will have a budget hearing after the board adopts the budget, um for a lot of people, that seems counterintuitive, but that's the law. Well, we can't have a hearing until there's an approved uh budget by the board. Uh that's scheduled for May eighth, and then the school budget vote would be on May twentieth, uh at Havelin Middle School, uh just like every year, and the time would be from six AM to eighteen. So this is our presentation, and we'd be happy to answer questions.
I I have a question, so a a few meetings ago, I thought you said that you were changing the way we kicked off a budget and we were gonna start from zero versus the way we've always been doing it, it's like what what's what did we do last year and then build upon it or? And I thought you said we were going to start from a clean slate this year because we've always done it this way for the past umteen years. Is that did that is that going to happen?
Well, we're working towards that, the plan was to have a a zero-based budget next year, but in a zero-based budget, there's still um increases. The zero-based budget just means when we when we start working with the administrators, like instead of having, asking them to uh request new items that they want in the budget, they would have to provide support for all of the items they have.
So we're not doing it for this budget?
No.
Okay.
So the the just the rollover, you know, that uh we're still analyzing each of the, you know, different pieces in in the budget as it stands now. We're we're evaluating each of the proposals that come in. Um one of the things that we'll be, you know, asking are those series of questions, how does it, you know, support these areas in the strategic plan?
But we're only doing that for new stuff, we're not doing it for stuff that's already there, right? That's where the zero, the zero dollar budget is.
So so that that's, yeah, so I I mean, it's gonna be a combination of both, right? Because if someone is asking new for new items, the first question is how do we know the things that you currently have in place are working? Um and do we need to reallocate, you know, something that funds that are going to one specific area? Um I think the zero bu- base budget, um it's sort of gonna be like a hybrid this year. Um until we move into next year, we'll do it a hundred percent. But it's a it's a comprehensive process because, you know, let's say, you know, we typically order a a hundred boxes of paper clips, right? Uh we don't need, we might not need to continue ordering a hundred, you know, boxes of paper clips, but that's sometimes, you know, the the spending pattern that we we may get into, and so those are the things that we wanna try to help our administrators to unpack as we as we engage in in this process year after year.
I think it makes sense because if we've been paying something for X number of years, but new stuff has to go through this new process, I think it's fair to go back and put put the old stuff through the new process as well.
Right, right.
See where it ends, right?
Yeah, we've been doing the research on that this year, like we've found that a lot of districts that will use zero-based budgeting. It'll be like cyclical, though they might start off like uh rolling it out, but then they have the year at zero-based, and then they actually have their new baseline. They might go a few years with that, but then do it again.
Every year.
Yeah, every year, yes, yeah. And we are asking, uh one of the new things that Dr. Roman is asking for the request is there, he's asking people, is there anything you can remove from your budget? Like how how important is this, is it something that we can, is there another item that we can remove to fund?
Any other questions?
I would say thank you for all the, you know, hard work, of course, for the people at home. It's not an easy process, there's a lot of variables there, we're not even gonna know it till March and April, and so uh again, thank you for the presentation.
Right, thank you. Moving on to uh public participation, could I get a motion to enter public participation?
So move Kate Second, Margaret.
Oh, it's baby. The post-motion period. Please note that the general rule, public participation is limited to three minutes per speaker, with the first public participation segment limited to twenty-one minutes, the segment of time may be modified by the board as deemed appropriate. The board requests that remarks be courteous and respectful of all. Would anyone like to address the board?
Uh Bobby Goodman, spent a few weeks. I just, I was gonna mention this about from the food service presentation, I don't know if you remember, we used to have vending machines that had to go lunches at FDR in the um in the lobby, so like kids that don't have a lunch or came back from Bocis were able to just punch in their coat and they got a cold sandwich or whatever the cold lunch was, so I don't know if that's an option to help with the lines. Again, the machines are still there, sitting in the cafeteria, but we don't use them anymore, so that might be something to help with, like getting some of the food faster for some of the kids. And um Mrs. Ainsley does a lot of the um media stuff that you were talking about, seniors when they do their senior thesis, they do a lot of that.
And my civic readiness.
Civic readiness project, yes, that's another big deal with Mrs. Ainsley, so that's all, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Hello, how are you? I just wanted to give a little bit of background for myself, I am Camila Duran. I graduated from FDR in twenty twenty-one, and now I'm a student of international relations in Suny New Paltz. And I think my main concern today is the various uh executive orders President Trump has released um lately, and especially the one that allows ICE now to um make arrests in public places, especially schools, um churches and other places of community, and I was wondering if the board has talked about how is it gonna approach this issue? And how is it gonna um protect the students at the school, or if you guys have um touched that subject?
So the process is we have open mic, you guys all speak, then we close it, and then we choose to respond or not, so. So it's not a dialogue to get.
Okay, yeah, it's it's my first time.
Yeah, no, it's understandable. So if you're done, then, you know, we'll we'll respond to you after we close public participation.
Um also, if you may or you may not have talked about the issue, if there's gonna be a um some sort of communication with the parents and the students as well. Um and yeah, that that would be it. Thank you.
Thank you. Did anyone else like to address the board? At this time, we will oppose public participation. Um so on the the vending machine, I don't know, could we talk to uh?
I was just at a meeting uh yesterday at the high school with Craig, and we were meeting with uh Mike, Mike Ruela, and Craig brought it up that he wants to start using the vending machines again. I did have to leave that meeting to come back here, so I don't know if they made a decision yet, but I I'll follow up on that.
Um maybe I was just a comment for him, right? Um for her, um I don't know, if you, uh guy not familiar with the.
Yeah, sure, so um just so so that I reiterate some of the things I I had shared uh previously with the board in terms of the work that we're doing with our principals. So we were able to meet with all of our principals uh to discuss the safeguards that have been issued or reissued uh by the State Education Department. Uh first and foremost, we are creating a si- a space where we welcome all of our students, we are a public uh education entity, so we have to educate all students and provide them free and appropriate education, uh regardless of their immigration status. Our administrators are aware in terms of the safeguards that are outlined and and the um supports that are available to them. Um we are working in concert with our attorneys uh in the event that we do get a judicial uh warrant, um that's the only time that we're able to engage in any conversations with any agent um or law enforcement that reports to our school. Um so we will be requesting those documents um to determine what next steps we'll take, and we'll be working hand in hand with our legal counsel to um to to determine what we need to do with regards to what's outlined in those legal documents. Uh again, we'll we'll, you know, we'll be uh there to protect our our students, to support them um and to support our families, uh right now, um Melissa Lawson and her team are gathering uh resources to share with our families uh who may be impacted by these executive orders. Um and those will be shared uh with families as soon as we compile them. Um once again, our our goal is to to educate our students, to continue to create a safe space, an inclusive environment for all, um and us continue moving forward in terms of making sure all students get what they need to be successful.
Thank you. And just logistically, so we'll have a second public participation, so if you had a follow-on question, you So if you had a follow-on question, you'd have an opportunity at the second public participation. That's the way that meeting works. Okay, at this time, we'll move on to nine dot one board subcommittee reports. Any committees meet?
The committee met today. And we talked about vaping at the high school. That was an issue that was brought up by a student at our last board meeting. I'm happy to report that one of our social workers at the high school is working with a group of eight to 10 students on a vaping awareness campaign. And our administrative staff is constantly monitoring bathrooms with school security as well to make sure that they're addressing anything that comes up. So more to come on the awareness campaign.
The awareness campaign is important, but I'm just still concerned about what the students shared. And what they're sharing was different from administrators in the bathrooms all the time. So I guess we just wanna keep our eye on that.
And because that's. Aren't in the bathroom all the time, so.
I get that, but maybe looking at the.
Security staff are monitoring bathrooms.
Are they male and females? So they can go into both genders?
And we also have vaping sensors in our bathrooms, so administration can respond when those go off. And in addition to the awareness campaign, we'll be talking to students about what they can do when they encounter up here vaping, so that, you know, it can be reported in the time. This is not a unique issue to Hyde Park, unfortunately. And as we all know, vaping pens can be disguised very easily. And they're constantly coming out with new products that are hard to determine that that's in fact what they are. So it is a challenge, and we're working on it, as well as the building safety teams. So the building safety team is reviewing this as well.
Any other policy committee met?
We've got some for approval here tonight, discussion. One was mostly clarifying things and clearing up language, but there was discussion about public participation. And also a procedure to question certain materials being used in the schools. Kind of a guideline about a group of events.
The EV bus committee met. We had a presentation from Highland Fleets. They'd had more information, more financial information for us. And I'm sorry, I don't know the exact numbers. But I think ultimately, if we went with, this is the leasing company, we went leasing company, it would be a little more expensive than if we ran it on our own. But we would save in a lot of headaches and hassles, and so that may be the best way to go. Since then, one of the questions that came up, or has come up, is can we get any data from the buses we have now on their use and costs? And Ryan from the garage has provided some of that, and Linda's done some analysis. So I'm gonna turn it over to Linda and let her review.
Thank you, thank you. I also wanna mention the 12-volt battery because that came up at their last meeting. So the one EV bus that we have was not operating because the 12-volt battery was draining. And so it caused it so the whole bus wouldn't work. We weren't sure what the reason was. I think, Mike, you had mentioned that it could potentially be a camera draining it. But when we contacted Leonard Bus, they sent us a new battery and had Brian test that out. Brian made sure it was fully charged, installed it in the bus. It was working then. He didn't send the bus out because he wanted to just see how long it would be hold the charge, and it didn't hold it. It was drained almost immediately overnight again. So we contacted Leonard Bus Sales, and they're actually taking the bus to their facility in Middletown. They have equipment there that they can use for diagnosing what the issue is. But their lead mechanics over there are saying that they think that it's either the camera system or it could be the two-way radio. They're saying something, they're thinking something is staying on when the bus is turned off. So that's something that they'll diagnose and then be able to.
I had a volt meter at my house.
I don't know what they have for diagnosing it. But, so that's the status of that. But like Mike Tibbet said, we did get information about the charging from the charger. Brian most recently sent information that was for the time period from November 5th through January 9th. In that time period, we, based on the number of kilowatt hours that we use and what we pay for energy, the cost of electricity was 802.91, $802.91. When you apply that to the miles that we drove in that time, that time, it worked out to 56 cents per mile for electricity. The charger also provides information, they have the fuel displacement per gallon. They're saying we would have used in gas or diesel during that time period. So we can use that to determine the savings. I'm not sure, I'll have to find this out from our bus company, if that's actually diesel or gasoline that they're suspecting we would use. But if it was diesel, gasoline, we would be spending $1.26 per mile. And if it was gasoline, we would be spending $1.19 per mile. So for the 32-day period, it costs just for fuel 56 cents for the electricity as opposed to $1.26 for diesel or $1.19 for gasoline.
And I missed that meeting. You don't have to throw me under the electric bus. When, Montgomery County, Maryland has been using the electric buses for a few years now. I responded to, or made the presentation to see if we could get some more data from them about repairs down time and that kind. But when I talked to, they have an EV bus manager. When I talked to him, he said that was a problem they were having with all the 12-volt batteries on all the buses. And he mentioned that there is an option, some kind of inverter that keeps the 12-volt charged off the battery pack on the bus. He said, if you got buses, you need that option on every bus. So there is a solution to that problem.
Well, I think the solution needs to come from Leonard Bus, right?
Yeah, but.
Because.
I'm hoping they'll get back to us and find out what.
And as far as the camera or the radio, all the diesel buses have the same setup, right? So either the bus itself is defective or the installation of one or both of those items is defective.
Yeah, and I'm not sure if the radio was installed for us by Leonard Bus when we got the bus, but I know the cameras are not installed by them. We go through the county, through bus patrol, and they come after we have the bus. So I'm just not sure.
There's no way they were designed to stay on after the key's off. It's got, I think with you, I think there has to be some issue that Leonard Bus can do.
Remind us, so the insurance was the same, whether it was a gas bus or an electric bus?
I did talk to Nicer about that quite a while ago, like before we had the vote in November. They just don't have any experience, enough experience to determine if the rate should be different. So they did wanna make sure that we knew it may change in the future.
Sure. Then for other committees.
This is one more, sorry, one more thing about this. We also just learned, Linda, that we got another 45-day extension on the EPA grant. And that Leonard Bus will apply for yet another one as that comes up. So we haven't lost it yet.
PA grant is extended through February 28th now. And we can apply for another extension before it expires.
So regarding other committees, as I mentioned already, we kinda went over it. Katie and I are part of the tech committee. Thanks again for participating. We've already talked about that. Dutch County School Boards, last time we met, I mentioned that we talked with David Shaw about negotiations. And I shared that with the entire board, what's going on around the county to let you know about that and so forth. This week, Dutch County School Board members are participating in the selection of the committees for the new Dutch County Bosie Superintendent. I was asked to be part of that. Unfortunately, I was unable to do that because I've, you know, received a new full-time job. But several members from our county on the Dutch County School Boards are on that committee, along with superintendents to pick a new Bosie superintendent. So we'll have more information soon. And then Monday, with Ms. Lawson, we'll be having our special ed committee. And we'll be talking about all things special ed and how we're servicing those students and helping the parents.
Any other committees?
Instructional DLT met. Jessica, feel free to chime in. It was a full-day meeting. A wide range of participants. We reviewed priority areas, reviewed our goals, reviewed New York State initiatives. Something of note is September of this year, districts are gonna be required to complete an attestation specific for our literacy instruction, which is why we're beefing up the science of reading. And a lot of work on multi-tiered systems of support and research and evidence-based strategies. And working on, I can't say enough, the the continuum of this work has just continued without a pledge. Because we ran it last year, new stakeholders, new deputy superintendent, and the work just is still moving forward. So I'm excited to see where we end up.
Any others?
The only other thing I would ask is, maybe it ties into technology a little bit. We all know that New York State just passed the law for next year about temperatures in school buildings. So I just wanna see at some point, maybe we can get a presentation about where we are with that, just comply with the new law.
All right. Moving on to nine point two board discussion, including consent agenda items. Anybody have anything to discuss?
I would like to propose another board retreat to learn about international baccalaureate, so that ultimately the board can decide whether this is a direction we'd like to move. I'm guaranteed Jessica knows a lot more about IB than I do. And I would ask if the board wants to do this, that we would charge her with getting someone from IB to come and have a presentation.
I think that'd be good.
And I don't have any proposed dates. Sometime before the next September, how about?
So in addition to that topic, any other topics that we should look at for board retreats? And if you don't think of it tonight, if you think of it, just send an email out to the board and copy Dr. Roman. I did have a question for you. I kinda gave you the assignment at the last meeting about the whole process of electing the board official and stuff. Has, have you looked at, you don't have to give me an answer, but have you mentioned that to other students and started to think about how you're gonna tackle that?
Yeah, so previously, you know, before the board meeting, I had talked to Giuseppe because I, you know, I do tend to talk to him because we're in the same government together. I think we were just kinda still talking about it, you know, I haven't seen him as much, but kind of like figuring out better way, I guess.
And then when do we do the election for that? That's in June? Or May, maybe?
Yes, around May, May.
So, you know, process-wise, we would have to, certainly you guys work with Mr. Ruela, come up with a good process, put it for us. I don't even know if we have to approve that or not. I think it's up to Mike really to decide. But we would like to see the outcome of that, of what the process would be going forward.
Yeah.
And I think you can be confident that you have the board's support in opening this position up to broad students.
The process now versus how we're gonna change it, right? Because we think we know what the process is, but it would be nice to see exactly what that was. And some of us, knowing with prospective students who wanna run, but it would be interesting to, we just know who's there, we don't know how they got there. So I would be interested to look at exactly what the administration had done to get those students and then how we can open it up, what the new ideas are.
All right, any other discussion?
Along with that, since we're talking comments from the students, was there any update on the plans for the capital project? I know you were, Dr. Roman, you were meeting with people. Is that still in discussion?
Yeah, so we're gonna be circling back to the students. Ms. Ruela put a plan together. He shared it with me this week. It was a short week and I was out one day this week. So we're gonna be following up with the students next week or the week after. And then just communicating the plan out to all stakeholders involved.
And we'd like to hear the students' reaction to whatever this plan is, right? So, are you happy with it or not? We'd like to. That comes out. All right, any other discussion?
So for consent, item 10.6. We're talking about consent agenda, correct?
Yes.
Okay, new course sounds very interesting. I just wanted to know a little bit more about it. Maybe Jessica could tell us. To me, it sounds like it might be talking more about state regulations and all, but that course sounds very interesting. So I wanted to see if we could hear a little bit more about it.
Monsters and madness.
Monsters and madness. That's why I made my joke about say that.
So, this is a new course that one of our high school teachers has put together. There was an interest in infusing graphic novels into our curriculum and enhancing and building on students' interests. The text has been chosen. The teacher has a colleague that teaches this course at a college level. And so that's how the text was chosen as a recommendation. It's a Frankenstein text, right? So it's a deep story and can be approached in many ways. It allows multiple, graphic novels allow multiple entry points because there's a visual component plus the linguistic component that's there. Plus, it's actually high-level reading because you have to be, you can't just read right to left. You have to kind of follow the story, and the story could go from different areas in the text. So if it doesn't make sense, you have to use your analytical skills to go back to the sequence of the story and the graphics. And a few years ago, news ELA, the Regents exam for ELA, New York State Regents exam featured a passage from the novel. So our high-level exams are infusing graphic novels. And it's a focus on also additional Gothic texts and literature. So there's a main text and then there's supplemental.
So I think it sounds terrific. I mean, obviously, we all know reading is essential. Whatever we can do to get the buy-in from our students to read, you know, something like this, that's terrific. So it sounds very exciting.
Yeah, sure.
Thank you.
To offer it, yeah.
Excellent.
Is the intent for this to replace, and you mentioned they're outdated or low enrollment classes? Or is this gonna replace one of those or is this an addition?
It's an addition to right now because we haven't taken any courses off our enrollment list or out of the course catalog. The one thing we have had a conversation about is at what point do we run courses being new to our system? I'm still in my learning phase. So do we run courses with eight students? Do we run courses with three students? And really taking a look at that.
All right, any other discussion?
All right.
There was a question about the administrative stipend appointment.
Just an explanation for a stipend for a position that we've hired someone for.
You tried to miss that?
It's on the personnel.
Personnel?
Sorry, yes.
It's been updated to, say, prorated, right? So it's a prorated amount. That's not the full amount. So that was during a transition period?
So to be prorated supersedes that figure. So that's not gonna be that.
Yeah, that's the full year amount. The amount will be prorated for the timeframe specified above.
Okay, okay, thank you. Because I. I heard somebody on September.
Any other discussion? All right, moving on to 10.1, could I get a motion to approve tonight's consent agenda?
So move Tibbetts.
Second, Margaret.
All those in favor?
I oppose.
Motion carry. 11.1, capital project change order at Violet Ave. Can I get a motion to approve the change order?
So, second Tibbetts.
Any discussion? Any discussion? All those in favor? Proposed. Motion carried. Moving on to twelve point one, so now this is our new um policy, um. That we just approved from a public participation standpoint. So can I get a motion to enter into the second public participation?
So move, second I.
All those in favor? Opposed, motion carried. I'll read the new uh public content, although the board meeting, although school board meetings must be open to the public. There is no legal requirement that school boards allow members of the public to speak. At board meetings, we feel it is important to hear from Hyde Park Central School District taxpayers, community citizens, school personnel, members of the board. Appointed committees and school students and invite them to address the Board of Education at this time. The board reminds speakers that the public comment portion of our meeting is only. One item on a lengthy agenda, this segment of public participation will be limited to an overall time of twelve minutes. We ask that each speaker be concise and that remarks be limited to three minutes. We expect individuals participating in public participation to speak respectfully and courteously. Modeling proper civility and decorum for our students. The Board of Education will listen to your comments and will respond after public participation has been closed. Board members will address agenda items only, questions regarding a specific staff member or student. Will not be addressed due to confidentiality concerns. The board president typically addresses policy questions, concerns, the superintendent or designee. Usually addresses operational questions or concerns. So with. Oh, so um. What we're asking for now was, and this has always been there, but we really haven't enforced enforced it, is we're saying uh. Please provide uh your name and address when you reach the podium, so we should probably put that up in the public. So so with that, with the new policy, would anybody like to address the board?
I live here in Hyde Park. I live in, do I have to give my address?
I I believe so, yeah.
Uh my address is four eighty seven Rusky Lane in Hyde Park. And my follow up question was that in the event that ICE does present a warrant. Uh what specific protocols are in place to ensure minimal disruption to students' uh education? That would be it, thank you.
Would anyone else like to address the board? Okay, at this time, we'll close public participation.
Sure, so if if any agents or law enforcement. Does report to any one of our schools, the first and foremost, we wanna make sure that we keep students in their current. Locations to minimize any kind of uh traffic in hallways and things like that. Um the second thing is, uh if we receive a warrant, we're gonna contact our attorneys right away. Um so that we can get guidance uh to ensure that we're protecting the due process rights of students. Um at the same time, making sure that we're we're following the law as as written. Um and then and then uh secondly is making sure that any emergency contacts that we have on file. Are notified um so that they're aware of what's occurring. And then putting a a team in place to be able to share those resources that we're collecting. To make sure that our families um are aware of the res- those resources as well as their rights. In terms of responding to um any kind of, any kind of um agents reporting to our schools.
Thank you. All right, moving on to thirteen point one, any other matters uh deemed necessary by the board? Do we have any other reason to go to the second executive session? All right, at this time, can I get a motion to adjourn tonight's meeting?
Some move that.
All those in favor? Uh opposed, motion carries.
You didn't get a second.
No, you gotta stay.
Meeting adjourned, thank you, stay warm.